Folks, we're going live. Good evening, everyone. Such robust grounds, good. Everybody, I'd like to welcome everyone to the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two Burlington City Council meeting. This meeting is being held live via Zoom platform and will be live streamed on the city of Burlington YouTube page at www.youtube.com/COBNC. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments and to address council with this meeting, please indicate if you wish to do so by using the raised hand feature in Zoom or by phone. Press star nine and our meeting host will notify me that you wish to speak. I am Mayor Jim Butler. I'd like to confirm that all members are present. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tim Harold Davis. Here. Councilmember Kathy Heitz.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ronnie Wall. Here. Councilmember Bob Ward. Here. Thank you. For tonight's invitation, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall.
Pray with me, please. Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever invented, for even the states and the steps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride. The pride that pumps up and the pride that threatens unqualifies. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we encounter after. Ready us to make every moment count in your name. Amen.
Amen. Next on the agenda is recognition of our COVID advisory committee. It's just time we'll call on interim city manager Dave.
It will catch all your better.
Okay. Is the COVID advisory committee in here or are they coming in now?
Yeah.
You know, this microphone takes me away from my notes. I'm sure. It was two years ago this month that Wuhan China became a regular name in these states and we, you know, what we've been through and we established a COVID advisory committee here of our employees because you'll recall of all the hoops we were having to jump through to try to figure out how to live in this new world where you can't breathe on each other. You can't be around each other and this committee, you know, there they are. In my first apartment meeting, I got introduced to this, well, not this whole committee, but somebody that was running it. But after the discussion, I thought we ought to recognize sort of as a maybe a symbol, knock on wood, that we're past this stuff. And also to say, recognize them for a job well done. This has not been an easy environment for anybody to lead people, to manage them, direct them. We were working off of very unsolid ground at times. So with that, these folks did a very special job and this, this man standing out front is our safety director. His name's Tommy Simmons. And he navigated, I want you to know the hotline I remember for COVID was Tommy's cellphone. That dedication. He answered every call about whether they should have an event or not, how they should have an event safely, whether 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 we were coming into work that day, how to do remote work, how to trace who you'd turn around. I mean, the guy was juggling a lot and these people met every week. I understand. So I would just like to recognize, they did receive an award for this. They were recognized in our community by our health department because we reached out outside of Burlington to the other agencies that were struggling with this. I think they looked at Burlington as a model. They looked at Burlington as a way to get things done and they also looked to Burlington Brass or some time. So they checked the CDC, the North Carolina DA, except they asked every week, update the employees. There was a lot to it, folks, and everybody knows this, this run any business in the past two years, so. I'd like to encourage them with a round of applause. Here's your chance. One thing I learned about Tommy is that first thing he's passionate about what he does, he's the least of what he does. That's why I didn't want to talk right now. That's why I don't.
Thank you so much. I agree they did a wonderful job. We really appreciate. At this time, we'll call on interim city clerk Michelle Parker Evans to the code of ethics.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there are any potential conflicts during tonight's session.
Thank you. Next before us is the approval of minutes, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-two work session, March first, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. Motion. Got a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second. Motion of the second, all in favor signify aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. Have a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second? Second, all in favor signify aye. Any opposed? Our next item is to consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item one is to approve, approve a municipal agreement for inspections of bridges on the municipal street system with NCDOT. Item two is to authorize the city manager, the director of finance, risk management, and the interim city clerk to execute the contracts and to authorize the city manager, the director of finance, risk management, and the accounting treasury manager as signers on all of the accounts. I'll entertain a motion with consent agenda. Motion. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor signify aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we'll go to our public hearings. We are going to depart from our agenda just a little bit and move to our last two items, items four and five, which they should be short in nature. They have to go through these. So we'll start with item four. Then we'll go back to one of these. Item four, public hearing has been scheduled to approve the resolution to apply to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant Program in support of National On Demand Project. At this time, we'll call Peter Bishop, Technology Development Director.
My presentation is set and share my screen so one moment.
Thank you very much, Morgan. And thank you, Mr. Murray. Good evening, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you in person and not across a virtual screen to make this presentation to you. We have two great ones to talk about tonight. We'll begin with the first. National On Demand is requesting the city of Burlington to be a partner in a building reuse grant through the Department of Commerce. So our agenda this evening will give a brief introduction of the company, talk about the project that they're proposing to do in the city, talk a little bit about the building reuse process and what that is at the state level, give a little summary and wrap up of what's happening with this project and then answer any questions that you may have for myself or for the company. So National On Demand is a company that was formed probably about ten years ago in Manhattan by Doug Bodler, who is here tonight, and emerged in twenty seventeen with another firm at Tix Stanford, the CEO there. They are a full-service construction design firm serving the wireless technology, fiber, energy, and technology sectors. This company, as you can imagine, is experiencing significant growth. The services that they provide are very much in demand. Any of us who've just been through a pandemic and were relying on broadband internet services can understand the need and the demand for this product. In addition, there have been a lot of state and federal programs recently that have been set up to support the more broadband and broadband expansion. And also renewable energy has been a significant push in this country for several years. All sectors that National On Demand is active in. And of course, they were a prior building reuse grantee. So how exciting is it for us to be talking about a company that we helped locate a couple of years ago? And now they're looking to invest even more and expand even more in our community. Speaking of that previous project, the company in twenty nineteen purchased the former Bank of America building in downtown Burlington and renovated that through a grant of about three hundred thousand dollars from the state. In that project, they created thirty-three jobs. Their headcount now is at forty and it's about to expand even more. And the photo we see at the bottom is the renovation of the second floor of that building where they have an operations center right now in downtown. Something that's very impressive about National On Demand, of course, the name National is in there, but they've been really growing that footprint through some aggressive and very timely mergation acquisitions. The company has acquired sixteen firms in the last four years, so going from, you know, employee to employee and specialty to specialty. They are now at over one thousand employees nationwide, serving the company and of course headquartered here in Burlington. In addition to these acquisitions, they've also made some financial partnerships and really created an excellent runway for growth for the company. So the details on this specific project that's proposed today, the company through a sister affiliated LLC has purchased the First Horizon Bank Building in downtown Burlington. They're proposing to create fifteen jobs at their corporate headquarters and invest one point four plus million dollars in personal real property in that building. The average salary in these jobs, almost three times the county's average wage at one hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars. The company has requested a maximum grant through the building reuse program of half a million dollars or five hundred thousand. And our local match at five percent will be twenty-five thousand dollars to that. And here's a picture of the building that they'll be renovating. Built in nineteen eighty-seven, has always been a large bank headquarters and of course, you know, installed in tertiary and medium-sized markets. A lot of these large bank buildings are getting much smaller. Banking has really transitioned to our phones. Most of us do all our banking right period or check cashing. So this is a good fit for them. This is a thirty-four thousand square foot building. It takes up an entire block in our city, so a prominent building in Burlington. Really excited to see them fully renovated, put all new flooring, new finishes, HVAC, some technology upgrades. It's going to be a really exciting renovation to have them in that building, have their sign up on that corner from where it is now. So the building reuse grant program, it's a, it's really a great program. I of course love it a lot. We've been very active with Burlington in it. It was a legacy program of the old North Carolina rural center and moved over to the Department of Commerce in twenty thirteen with the statutory approval. It is for state funded in the state budget process. Actually, in this last two year, by any budget, the state significantly increased the non-recurring funding needs program because it's so popular and successful. The funds are awarded in an interesting twist directly to the local government, not to the company. So the partnership and the resolution that we're signing today is very important to the application to be accepted because the government, the local government, the city of Burlington is technically applicant in partnership with National On Demand and creating the jobs and doing the renovation. Of course, I mentioned the five percent grant and administration. We're very used to doing these. We have a bounty of science here with the Department of Commerce. And then our security for this investment because the city is the applicant, is making an investment in the real estate. We actually do a deed of trust with the property owner to have a position on that property in the case of any default or anything going side of this. So building reuse grants, of course, I believe this, but I think it's been, the proof has been in the pudding. They're really a valuable redevelopment. Now Burlington, a few years ago, had a lot more vacant and obsolete structures than we do now. We've had a good market. We've had some success in bringing some new tenants into some of our vacant buildings. So we've really chipped away at that block pretty well. But this is a great fit for those type of buildings, especially ones that are obsolete, that don't really have a good pathway to new investment and market viability. And of course, Burlington's a great fit for this program. We're a medium-sized city. We're in a suburban slash rural location, not entirely urban. And the state really targets tier one, tier two rural and suburban locations with this program. So we're a good fit. I think our history shows that we're a good fit by winning some of these. And just to show you what those projects look like over the last three years. So we've been successful doing three building reuse projects that have brought over a hundred jobs to the city of Burlington and almost eight million dollars in new investment. And each of these projects, of course, is located in a once vacant building and added new life for renovation. So Flex Austin is in a bill on Tucker Street near Chapelville Road. Of course, National On Demand's first project was in the long vacant Bank of America headquarters. And Noah Living last year announced that they purchased the Lakeside Mill, the eighteen ninety-three Lakeside Mill, which had been vacant for over ten years and are renovating that project. So the proof is really in the pudding when it comes to getting these projects done and seeing the successes that we've had. So in summary, we love this, this program because it leverages significant state investment. So we put in five percent and the state puts in ninety-five percent. That's a really nice ratio of incentive help. Of course, National On Demand has further plans to expand. I mean, in the last five minutes, they probably acquired another company. So they will continue growing and expanding in downtown and this is an example of that doing so. Of course, we have security to the city through the deed of trust and I think we have a pretty valuable asset that will be invested in here to back that up. And then finally, we've got economic open goals. We have downtown goals. We want to see more jobs, we want to see more activity, more vibrancy in that downtown. This is the type of project that helps deliver that to us in a proper setting. So that ends my comments. I do want to recognize that we have the CEO of the company, Douglas Bodler, here with us and his brother Wade Bodler. They're both available to answer any questions that city council may have and I am as well.
Any questions? This has been a wonderful program and I know we have on our head on service. We can later start working on the next application here. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the floor at this time for public comments. Anyone wants to speak on this item? Anyone on this side has anything they wish to speak about? One of this side. Yes, sir.
Simple question. I'm just curious why there's only fifteen positions in size of building.
Good question. So those fifteen positions are actually additional positions. There are currently forty at their existing locations. So these will be added on to that number. So there will be fifty-five plus of this location built. Any other comments?
Can I add two?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Please step up.
That was welcome. We really appreciate you guys. The reason why it's fifteen is that's just the initial growth and there's a specific timeline that's tied to the grant as well to make sure those jobs are implemented as part of that. So we're currently exceeding capacity in the existing facility and this is going to be in addition to it. So it's just the jobs are going to continue to grow. As Peter mentioned, we've recently had even more investments. We are, we are doing additional acquisitions this year too.
Thank you. Thank you.
So are you saying that you're not vacating the building you're present in?
No, we'll be continuing to use that as well.
Any other, any other comments? This time we'll entertain a motion to close the public here.
Remove.
Got a motion, second. All in favor signify aye. Any opposed? Just tell me what you're talking about motion on the item. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to five, the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant Program in support of National On Demand. Got a motion as our second. We have a second. All in favor signify aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries on through. Thank you. Appreciate everyone. Everybody's work on that item. Our next item is item five. Public hearing has been scheduled to approve the resolution to apply to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant Program in support of Ten Minutes Project. So at this time, we'll call on Peter Bishop once again, or he cannot with the development director.
You have me now. All right. Excellent. Well, thank you again. This will be a slightly similar presentation with similar form, but again, encouraged and excited to be presenting two of these for you this evening. This is a slightly different project. This is for Dedicated North Carolina Medical Centers and Chedmet, a new primary care physician that is looking to locate in Burlington. So similar agenda, we'll introduce Chedmet. I'll actually have Antoine Harris from Chedmet come up in a couple of slides and share some more information about their company as they are new to North Carolina, new to Burlington. We'll review what they're proposing to do, of course, and we can kind of race through the building reuse grant process if you've just heard about that. And then again, take any questions from council. So I'll start a little bit and then let Antoine elaborate, but Chedmet and Dedicated is the largest family-owned family practice and practitioner in the United States. And they focus primarily on senior care. They've also been experiencing significant growth and expanding their operations in their franchise offices throughout the Southeast United States and generally the United States. They are doing, I think, seven different centers in North Carolina this year, possibly four. And Antoine, would you like to please go up and join some, join me and share some information on the company?
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. One of the reasons I thought it'd be very important to be here in person is because we're out of North Carolina. And while I say that, I'm not leaving North Carolina. I'm a Southern white heart. I am down the road from Henderson, North Carolina. So as I was getting a note from the back, it's like, yeah, this is a small town. It's like, well, Henderson is small. It's still fifteen thousand people in Henderson. So this is actually some of this probably very, it's deeply personal for me because I had an opportunity to be a part of this organization that is based in Florida. But actually, the ones who use this organization have the opportunity to bring it back to North Carolina. So as I say, my mother, my grandmother, darling Henderson, my sister, nieces and nephews are in High Point. And so as I think about this, this is a great opportunity for me to be a part of this. What does that all mean? It really means that when you think about family-run businesses, it is a relatively small family, right? But if you look at it on the slide, it is still four thousand five hundred current employees. We're in twelve states. Could be close to a hundred centers. Over the next couple of weeks, we get a hundred centers and we are expanding in over the next couple of years as well. And so with that extension, one there is we've identified is the Burlington location. And through the Burlington location, we're saying, hey, how do we bring what we consider our model of care is senior focused? We cap our panels about four hundred and fifty. If you look at the industry, patient panels during around two thousand, we cap at four hundred and fifty. We like to see our patients once a month. That was, we're really talking about how do we deliver the IP service and care to a population that need it, the senior population. And I'll just kind of end with, when you really think about what's really the driver here is this family, the Chin family, sort of picture that Peter shared, had their own crisis many years ago where the founding father of this company had a health crisis where he was diagnosed with cancer and had too much to live, which completely flipped that family upside down. And in doing so, they rushed one of their younger sons to get married. It already had been engaged, so it wasn't a new person. But he was already engaged, but they rushed it so that father could see that. That mom, that occasion. Over the next couple of months, as he started chemo and radiology, they also they had six specialists and he had two months to live and his first appointment was in six weeks. So you just do the math. First appointment is six weeks and two months to live. And so one out of that was their passion for primary care and how do we bring some of this coordinated, looking at the seniors and also connecting the doctor, very complicated health system. And so that's where Chin was born, doing business that's dedicated, that's basically brought to the market. And we're all looking to expand and this is just only the beginning. Hopefully, we have a partnership with the city of Burlington.
And this just again, further summarizes Antoine's points, targeting seniors with an average age of seventy-one, five chronic conditions, so chronically ill and managing those cares focusing on low moderate income populations, which matches with the location of this facility. So the company through, through an affiliated LLC has purchased four seven eight Hardness Street near the interstate, just off of Maple Avenue. They are proposing in the first two years to create thirty jobs and similar to the other project you mentioned, they are planning to create more jobs after two years, but our grant period is only for two years. So we're just going to count what's in that window. They invest one and a half million dollars. They're going to fully renovate that pharmacy building to make it their own. The average salary, again, we're looking at fantastic average salaries for these projects. We're at nine thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars worth of stuff with the average county wage here in elements. The company is requesting three hundred thousand dollars in grant support and again, our local match at five percent would be fifteen thousand dollars. Here's a picture of the building. The, I think it was the Wollie Pharmacy, if I remember correctly previously, but built in two thousand and six and if council, if this is familiar to you, you did a slight rezoning and a use change to this back in January to allow this type of use to take place. Just over ten thousand square feet and again, they will be doing a full gut and renovation of this facility, plumbing, electric, flooring, paint, a whole nine yards. Again, building reuse grant, a great fit, a really good fit for vacant properties, as we talked about. In this case, there's actually another branch of, so there's the building reuse program for vacant buildings. There's the building reuse program for demolition, to demolish an existing structure and build something new. And then there's the building reuse rural health program. So they actually have a special category that recognizes the importance of making health investments in suburban and rural communities. This project falls into that specialty category. There aren't as many of those projects every year. So we feel pretty good about its chances to get funding and what it offers. And then again, remember that we've had a couple of successful building reuse programs. We're hoping that this will be another one in the line of those. And then again, the same, the same summary essentially. We are excited that Dedicated Chedmet will be adding over that thirty number of jobs. We just can't count it for this brand. We are leveraging significant state investment. And again, this, this is a census tract where this is located that is considered low to moderate companies in the opportunity zone. So there are several census and data factors that make this especially interesting as an investment and we're glad to see it happen there and have the service provided for our residents. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have and I believe Antoine will also be up here.
Council, any questions? And this is item, this item is a public hearing, so we'll open for public comments at this time. Public comments on the floor, anyone from this side of.
I just have one question.
Could you please stand up with microphones? State your name for it, please.
Mary Anne Shanahan. Thank you. I have one question for Antoine. Will this be an organization that accepts Medicare, Medicaid and other insurance?
Short answer is yes. Respect your Zoom call. The question around Medicare, Medicaid, actually, that is what we call our sweet spot. This is actually an organization that we focus on senior care and
This is actually an organization that will focus on senior care and Medicare. Medicare that is a primary product and help on that.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anyone from this side? We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So we have a motion. Second, all in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? This time we'll entertain a motion on the resolution. Mary, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to apply the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant in support of Ten Minutes Project. Have a motion, second, all in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks everyone for the presentation.
Thank you very much. April 27th is the date that the Rural Infrastructure Authority makes decisions on these grants. So I'll be coming back to you to let you know if we've gotten, if we've raised it on that day or put it before, or is that the date? It's likely on that day. Today we'll do a press.
This time we'll move back in our agenda to item number one. Item one, a public hearing has been set to amend the local historic district overlay LHO boundaries and removal of the following four properties, 1004, 1010, 1016, and 1022 West Davis Street. Also identified in Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers, 125084, 125089, 125539, and 125546 respectively. The properties are currently zoned medium density residential or MDR and local historic overlay. At this time, we'll hear staff presentations will recognize Jamie Lawson, our principal planner.
So I just have a quick PowerPoint, my PowerPoint presentation. So the city of Burlington received a request to amend the local historic district overlay boundaries and removal of the following four properties. 1004, 1016, and 1022 West Davis Street. They are highlighted on this map and in the hatched area. This map also shows the entire local historic district, West Davis local historic district. So you can see the properties are on the western most side of the, of the district there. Just going to go quickly through the process. So this process to amend the local historic district is a legislative matter and it's outlined in the city's development regulations, unified development ordinance, section 3.19 E. And it also follows the state statute 160D dash one, 160D dash 944. As background, this process started with an investigation and report, which was prepared by Richard Grubb and associates. The report described the significance of the building structures, features, sites and surroundings, as well as the description of the local historic district. The report recommends that the properties remain in the local historic district and states that the local historic district is a cohesive collection of individual properties where the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Ms. Trenko, Grubb and Associates is present. She prepared the report. Sir, do you have any questions for her? Next, the report was forwarded to the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm sorry, the report was forwarded from the Historic Preservation Commission to the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources for their review and 30-day recommendation. Again, this process outlined our development regulations requirements, section 319E2C. The state's response agreed with the consultant's report stating that the removal of the properties would likely lead to a presidential, that presidential value cascade effect that may work to the detriment of those, of other citizens, property owners and their positive expectations about investing within a locally designated district. Following the state's response, the Historic Preservation Commission at their February 8th, 2022 meeting unanimously recommended denial of the request and then forward their recommendation onto the Planning and Zoning Commission. Their recommendation was based upon the consultant's report and its recommendation and the state's currents, the significant public comment and input received and other considerations that were included in their memo that has been provided in your packet. Following that, the Planning and Zoning Commission at their February 28th meeting voted to recommend denial with a vote of four, five. And then planning staff has recommended denial based upon the inconsistency with the planning plan as noted in option three of your packet.
Excuse me, was that, I don't know.
Four, three, I'm sorry. Thank you. So while I'm up here, I just wanted to also take a minute to update you on some of the other relevant projects that are going on pertaining to the historic districts and area. First, there was an update to the architectural survey that was completed in 2021 to determine if study area properties, and this was over 1,300 properties, were eligible for recommendations to the national register study list. That was completed in 2021. Also in 2021, you may recall the Aurora Cotton Mills Ticket Posery Mill was designated a local historic district. That came in front of you guys, which is also a zoning overlay. And now they're seeking national registered status. And then finally, the city received a matching grant from the Historic Preservation Fund for certified local governments for the revision to the historic district standards. In this update, we will also be reviewing the process for seeking certificates of appropriateness and other improvements. We just had a kickoff meeting with the selected consultants, the Walker Group. We're developing an advisory committee. We will be holding public meetings in April and May. And we expect that to see you again in, in July with, with the report for your consideration. So that explains maybe an update on other things that were happening while I had the opportunity. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have under the applicants are both here, both present and believe also on a Zoom call.
When we put together the study committee for the standards to be obtained, how many people do we have on that committee?
The advisory committee? I'm thinking no more than 15.
I'm just like, there's 15.
We are, we're looking for recommendations. So if you have any particular folks that you would like us to solicit, but we're looking for representation from the two historic districts, the West Davis District and Glencoe, you know. We're looking for, we've got representation from the Historic Preservation Commission. We've had volunteers attending to that. We're also looking for architects, builders, developers to give us insight on medium modern building materials and other aspects of, of the standards that we're looking to modify. What else? I think that's about it. Maybe representative from the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. Oh, and also preservation Burlington and any, any other nonprofits that, that we feel that might be helpful.
Jamie, will, will there be an opportunity just for citizens to consider?
Right now, we're not, we're not opposed to having anyone on the advisory group. But we want to make it effective and efficient. There's a timeline that we're looking to exceed, like I said, we'll be back in July. So feel free to provide us with any recommendations that you have.
So what's the process for somebody if they're listening, you know, and have an interest in this, what will be the process for them to make that an interest?
I would say they can just contact me or for a member of the planning staff.
Any other questions, Jamie? So you said we do have the applicants present. Any, any information for the applicants?
Yes, I believe, I'm just wondering from the Robinsons first, since they're here, but I do, they have a PowerPoint presentation.
Sure, absolutely.
Try to. Open it first and then check.
Well. We're, we're pulling that out. Thank you for the honors. I'm Patrick Robinson, this is my fellow. We'd like to take an opportunity to thank city staff and particularly acknowledge Conrad, Olmada, and Jane Lawson. They've been fantastic work to work with and I really think they're assets to this city and I truly believe in that. So, we're council members, I know you have very dense in the packet with you tonight, but I hope you had an opportunity to read the letter that you submitted to and insert, which really outlines the reasons for our application. Tonight, we just want to cover a couple of key points regarding the reasons for our application.
And starting with the recap of, of something that really kind of initiated this process for us. This is, this is a timeline that we encountered, but we were trying to fix a leaking root last year. So from the time we identified the issue in November of 2020 and security contractor in early December, we found out we were going to need a major COA for this and we were delayed for two months by that process. And the reason that we had to seek a major COA is because we were going to have a design change visible from the street. UDO states that that means you need a major COA where the arrows pointing, that's the visible change. It was going to, it's a two-foot section that was going to change from brown to the white roofing material that we selected for the job. So just one more time, two feet brown to white, and that was two months that we were delayed by the process. And meanwhile, this was happening on our route. We had standing water and water intrusion was happening inside the home. And this picture was actually taken after Patrick had been up there bathing water off, which had to happen after every major ruin. So just to summarize that experience, during that time period, if you think of what was going on in our country, there were significant increases in the cost of materials to the tune of thousands of dollars during that two-month period. The scope of work also increased because we were delaying repair. No expertise or contributions were made by the HPC that they approved our request once we got to that point. But the COA process added no value to this. It just was an unnecessary delay.
I'd like to touch a little bit on precedent. You're, we are not the first property owners to request to be removed from this district. And 1998 is a picture of the church on the eastern boundary of the district and it requested to be removed. Among their reasons, citing justification, they've mentioned that the church property was bisected by the historic district boundaries, much like it does for Mr. Gans' property on this block. So that request was approved unanimously by city council. And on this map, you can see the red star is a picture of the church. And you'll notice that it remains on the national register as will our properties. The green star on the western aspect shows the identical boundary dissection cutting into Mr. Gans' property. And this is similar to the church request, and it's not present anywhere else in the district.
This is the front page of the Times, and it says, "The day after city council unanimously approved the request." And you'll notice the headline says, "We're not sending the signal." And we're sure that the council wanted to message that because there was probably at that time similar concerns that removing one property from the district would sell a wave of other requests. But that didn't happen and these are the first applications for an LHO amendment that this council is reviewing in 24 years. And there's some pretty striking similarities between these two scenarios. So let's look at the current zoning for a district and the surrounding area. Everything is zoned for medium density residential and then the district has the historic overlay. You'll notice also though, there are some commercial properties and high density residential properties inside the district boundaries already. And our application is just asking for that overlay to be lifted. We're still one of these own medium density residential, just like properties to the west and south of our block. We're on boundary edge, so this, this amendment wouldn't cause a whole patch in the center of the district. And overall, it's a pretty minimal change, removing, removing four out of 183 total properties. And the consultant did say that this will still be a cohesive district without these properties. There's some unfounded concerns that removing the historic overlay could encourage future development on our block. And we can assure you that our block is fully developed. But again, we already do have some zoning inconsistencies. We have commercial properties, we have high density residential inside the district. So we're looking at the future land use plan. Everything's planned for traditional residential with the historic overlay. And we're just asking for the overlay to be lifted, but again, still going to be planned for traditional residential and our applications are consistent with the local use plan.
So some of you may recognize this slide was presented to city council more than a year, citing some of the benefits of historic neighborhoods to the city. Approval of our application is not going to impact the symbol of this. There's been some suggestion about economic impacts of approval of our application and we researched this extensively. We even called the county tax assessment office asking if the historic overlay had any bearing or impact on tax revenue for the city. It doesn't. If anything, our taxes may go up. This, interestingly, the city's consultant even mentioned that there's properties within the, within the district that could gain landmark designation. And if that were granted, those properties would be taxed at half the back. So landmark designations would be risk for the city. The following is that approval of this amendment is going to have no impact on neighborhood problems. So we looked at home values within this district over the past 20 years. And this data comes directly from the county GIS data. There were 137 total transactions within this district. For the past 20 years, 29% of the homes lost value. More than one in four were sold out of walls. Almost half of them did not even keep up with inflation. I bring this up because the notion that the district and the COA process are protecting property values is simply not correct. And I think it's worth asking the question, does this COA process actually discourage some homeowners from making necessary updates and enhancing service? So this slide comes from the city's comprehensive plan and the text that is highlighted in yellow, citing a report that is, that suggests that local historic districts may see higher levels of maintenance and therefore greater appreciation rates. But it's important to understand that this is not always the case. And the author of this report even acknowledges that. Based on the data that I just shared with you, regarding this district, it isn't the case. These reports draw an association between these districts and, and home values. At no point did they say the COA process or an overlay increased home values. And more importantly, not one, at no point during any of these reports does it say that removing a property from the overlay is going to devalue house.
These are some pictures of homes that are just outside the district boundary. And in most cases, they're just a block from our property. They are of the same era and are equally historically and architecturally significant to our city. And they've been expertly maintained by their owners. And that's without oversight from the HPC for the COA process. So when you look at these homes, is anybody worried that they're going to devalue properties nearby because they're not contained within historic overlay? And is anybody worried that they're going to not be well maintained by their owners because they're not under purview of the HPC or contained within an overlay? I, I doubt you could say that.
So this, this slide is taken from the city's UDO. It's outlining the purpose and the intent of a local historic overlay. Among the, one of the goals is to stabilize. Among the goals, one of the goals is to stabilize and enhance property values. Again, the LHO and the COA process is only applied to a homeowner who's wanting to make a change and update their house. So the COA process is only going to create an increased burden to a homeowner trying to maintain their home. There are no minimum standards within the district. Let's look at our property, for example. The previous owner purchased this property in 2006, and it was for 11 years. Didn't do a whole lot to update the property. enlisted for sale in 2015. Sat empty with no interested buyers for two years. We purchased this property in 2017 for 16% less than the previous owner did in 2006. And some people might say, "Well, that previous owner purchased it during the housing bubble." But in fact, we purchased this home for 4% less than it was sold for in 1998. And that devaluation occurred in this district. So in doing all this research, we came across some interesting quotes from the same author that was the comprehensive plan site. And first quote is, "Does historic listing increase the economic value of a property?" And that is answered on a locality-by-locality basis. So sometimes yes, and sometimes no. But the biggest and adverse impact on the value of a house is proximity to vacant or abandoned property. This brings us to 1010 West Davis Street. This is the property that was directly next door to ours when we purchased our home in 2017. This house had fallen into severe disrepair and been neglected due to very, very unfortunate circumstances. And in 2020, the HPC approved its demolition after its deemed-to-be threat to public safety. So council members, Mayor, we have had a front-row seat to the double standard that exists within this district. And the irony is profound. We were cited with a stop-work order threatening excessive fines and jail time because we cut down a few trees that were planted too close to the house. Directly next door, there are gutters along every route, and there are vines and trees that are overtaking the property. We need to fix our leaking roof, and it failed. We are delayed in that process by two months, and we incur significant increase in the cost of maintaining this property just because we have to go before the HPC to plead our case and ask for approval. Directly next door, this property of the years developed a three-foot hole in the roof, yet absolutely no intervention from the HPC. So this is not preserving homes. There are no minimum standards. Nothing about this system is going to preserve or protect a home in perpetuity. The only thing it does are engaged homeowners investing in their property.
So we do want to acknowledge the letters from the public that are included in your agenda packet. And I think more were sent, and some right before this meeting, so these numbers don't reflect and include those. And we think it's important for you to consider the context in which these letters have been submitted. 95% of what you have in your agenda packet are form letters that have been submitted. And there has been a coordinated campaign launch to oppose our applications. And the issue with that is that it's rooted in misinformation and severely misrepresented our intentions. The public has been told that if our LHO amendment is approved, that their properties are going to be devastated. That is simply not true. Public has been told the tax revenue for the city could be jeopardized if our properties are removed from the districts. And we cleared that up with the tax assessment office. They said that it had no bearing on assessed property tax taxes. And they've been told that we have no calls for these applications, but we very clearly do. So it's no surprise to us that members of the public are worried and were motivated to submit form letters. They've been scared by a fierce opening campaign that's been launched. But they've been misled from the start. And as for the letter from the HPC that also recommends that you deny our request, that letter was drafted two weeks prior to the February 8th meeting, which for the first time, the applicants finally reported on this admission. We had submitted our application nine months prior. We had not a single question from the HPC, not a single conversation about the subject. They were more focused on opposing our applications than they were and looking at the key issues that we were pointing out with our application. There are some pretty significant issues that need to be examined there. And as it relates to the comprehensive plan and the goal that's been set to celebrate Burlington's unique history and cultural character, we own a 100-year-old home, and we are fully aligned with this goal and both of these recommendations. But what we're taking issue with is the suggestion that oversight from the Historic Preservation Commission is the only thing that's going to get through there. Consider the homes that we showed you. They're just outside the district boundary. Are they in conflict with this goal that Burlington set? No, and neither are our applications.
We also think that with the goal recommendation being to support the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners, we think that the last thing that the city would want is for engaged homeowners that are investing in the area to become so frustrated with the red tape and unnecessary derogation that they say this is no longer worth it and move.
This is, again, pulled from the city's UDO. And the city's own policy states that the Historic Preservation Commission is to update their standards at least every five years. But this ordinance has not been followed, and that's really unfair to the rights of the property owners living within the district. They haven't seen a meaningful update since 2000. And as Jamie shared, efforts are underway to finally update these standards. But what confidence should homeowners have that this is actually going to happen and in a way that supports and protects the rights of homeowners? And beyond that, what confidence should we have that five years later, there's going to be funding, and they're going to see another major update? But we don't have confidence in this based on history, and that's one of the reasons for our applications.
So, council members, over the past two months and two public meetings, we've heard some pretty outrageous accusations about the reasons behind our application. We've heard some pretty outlandish and ridiculous conspiracy theories behind our intentions. But we stand here before you because we want to hear from us what our reasons are for this application and what our intentions are. Reasons are that the COA process causes unnecessary delays, and it increases the burden to maintain a home. The increased cost and the increased scope of work from those delays falls on the homeowner. It implies a serious concern, lack of concern, from the HPC regarding the harmful impacts of the process. Through this whole application process, there's been no sense of collaboration or dialogue. The design standard is only part of the problem. It's a bigger systemic issue. There is a double standard within the district. And from our perspective, we've identified no meaningful benefits to remain within the district as appropriate. I'd like to look at this map one last time. What we have here is the exact same boundary deviation used to justify our removal of the church. You have, approving this amendment is not going to set the precedent for individual homeowners within this district to just punch holes and request to be removed without cause. What you have here is an entire block on the district boundary edge who are coming together and saying, "This is not working for us, and we just want the overlay lifted." This COA process and the district policies have harmed our property. And I think in the future, I think if you have an entire block of property owners that come together and say that this is working against, it's not helping, I think the city should listen. So in closing, these are our intentions. These properties are going to remain on the national register. They are going to remain historically relevant to the community. We love this house. We're starting a family. There's no one in this room that's going to speak tonight that cares more about that property than we do. We are going to continue to enhance and protect this house. All that we are asking for is to be afforded the same rights to do so as the property that is located 15 yards across the street to our south and west, so that we can be free of unnecessary bureaucracy and rectitude. So that's I respectfully ask you to approve this statement.
Thank you. Any questions?
So by that, I mean, there is no minimum standard. So we have to go through the process of applying for getting approval to make updates to our house. Yeah, I guess the best way to describe it is that the path of least resistance is to do not write. So there will be no intervention by the HPC of the city on neglecting that or not maintaining your landscape or not maintaining your property. So this whole system is only implemented by people that are actually trying to work on our own. And so we find that there are two standards in that.
So if you're not keeping your residents up, there's no repercussions?
It doesn't seem to be. I mean, there's no, correct.
There's no standard that you have to submit COAs.
The baseline is a minimum standard.
But if you want to make changes to your property, the UDO would state that you have to come before the HPC. That's when the standards are applied.
Noel and Jamie, does that mean minimum housing standards would be just like it is anywhere else throughout the city?
Correct.
Okay.
What was the cost increase from start to finish on this project?
On the roofing project? Well, it was a substantial job and a large amount of capital that we don't necessarily feel comfortable sharing and having printed in the paper. But like we said, thousands of dollars from the initial quote that we got in November. So when we signed the contract in January, and they got a schedule in February, it was thousands of dollars of increase.
That does not, yeah, it does not include the additional damage that was caused. That was just in the cost insurance.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will move to our public comments portion of the public hearing. As new mayor. Is he on?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you said he was not on.
No, he's on.
Okay.
I didn't see him up there. Yes. Do you want to promote him? Can you promote Lance Bay as a panelist?
What was the name again? I'm sorry.
Lance Bay. Okay. If he's not promoted as a panelist, then I would just unmute him and go.
Mr. Gans, can you hear us?
Excuse me, yes, I can.
Okay, the floor is yours for your comments on the application.
Thank you all very much. And first of all, a thanks to each one of you all for the time you contribute to our community and making it a better place. I know you don't get paid big bucks for that, so thank you very much for your time and the energy that you give unselfishly. Secondly, I want to personally thank Jamie Lawson and Conrad Almeto because they have worked tirelessly, have done a terrific job. They have been in no man's land and have treated everybody equally and have done a really, a really good job. And I don't think we can say thank you enough for them. I realize that you all must have a lot of information in front of you, and I hope that as you make these decisions, you will have read the current historical district guidelines, and you understand the significance of those guidelines and those several hundreds of pages of which property owners have to go through. Also, understand that these standards are just part of the process and that including in this process is the choosing of the members, the terms, the technical qualifications, the nature of the HPC, and the changes that have been made to the process since inception since 1995. So we have not had an update to that process or standard since 1995. Except for the removal of the Presbyterian Church, there have been no changes to the historical district since 1987. Although in a few minutes, we'll go through several significant changes that have taken place. My strong suggestion to each of you as council members is to make sure that you understand what we as property owners have to go through in order to make improvements to our property. And I hope that you all understand that our actions over the last 50 years indicate our dedication to preserving our property and to investing in our property. We are not about to do anything that will lower the value of our property. But if you will, I will hope that you would follow me by looking at the map. And Jamie said that she could have a copy of that if you all would like of the overlay of the historical district. Jamie, if you can put that up so everybody can see that, or if they've got one, that's fine, too.
Have a copy.
If you'll start at the northeast corner of the historical district and look at the intersection of Fisher Street and Front Street, you will notice an indentation into the church property there. That historical building was torn down decades ago. And yet, we have a situation where there's a church and property outside of the historical district. But in fact, a corner of their property is inside, and no changes were made when that took place. Take a look at the exclusion of houses that go between Brooks Street, Tarpley, Markenham, Peel, Trolinger. If you'll notice, individual houses were excluded. Some were, some were not. They're all in the same historical district. If you'll also notice, at the corner of West Front and Peel Street, you will see a high-density area included. It's not historical at all. And as you go towards Trolinger Street, you'll notice that a Shell station, which is commercial property and zone commercial, is included. I really don't understand those exclusions and those inclusions. What I'm trying to point out to you all is that the boundaries of this historical district, local, didn't really have much meaning and sense in how those lines were drawn. And then follow the line down Trolinger Street and through the block, through Attwater, to West Davis, and then over to Central. Some houses in, some houses out. All the same as far as age is concerned. And then go around till we get to East Willbrook. You will notice an indentation there at 713 East Willbrook. That happens to be our personal property. It is our guesthouse. So literally, one inch away, I can cut down a tree that's four feet in diameter and not ask anybody. And yet, one inch away, I can't cut down a tree that's four inches in diameter, four feet from the surface, from the ground. Technology today allows us to transplant trees that are two feet in diameter. And yet, in order for me to take care of my own yard, my own yard, we have to go get a certificate of appropriateness one inch away from our guesthouse that we own as well at 713. Makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? Not really. So let's follow the historical district all the way around until we come to Isley Place. You'll notice that Isley Place is included. Why? It was built in the 90s. It's not normal density. It's outside the federal historical district. Why was it included? Why was it not excluded? Nobody has any answers. Nobody has any answers. And then if you go around, obviously.
Mr. Gant, can you hear us?
Seems to have lost the... Am I back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Something happened there to the internet service. I apologize. So we end up with a historical district that has high density, commercial, moderate density, all involved in the same historical district. There really needs to be a study and an understanding what goes on. If you want to get further confused, you can look down Fountain Place and realize that it only goes to Kimes Street. Or the the only several houses that you'll see partially included. So the issue that I want to raise to you is that the standards and the system and the process that we operate out of date back to nineteen ninety-five. And that the boundaries have never been adjusted since nineteen eighty-seven, except for the removal of the Presbyterian Church. Tell me also anybody who can discuss applicable new technologies like three D printing that would help in keeping historical properties in better shape, the use of new materials. Has anybody from the HPC or the Burlington staff made any attempt to understand the cost that are being inflicted on property owners? I think the answer is no. Has anyone tried to understand the time value of money imposed on the HPC process on property owners? I think the answer is no. Is a city willing to pay the cost created for delays in this process? I suspect the answer is no. Are there any financial incentives to being a member of historical preservation dedication? Not that I'm aware of, none whatsoever. Would any of you personally like to live in a district where the color of your exterior paint is controlled by someone who does not live there? During the entire process, and this has now been going on for over a year, not a single constructive question has ever been given to us, my wife or myself from the HPC, to try to understand what are the issues at stake? And what can we do to improve the situation? Instead, we end up where it's really a very difficult and caustic environment, which is a real shame to the city. I don't know that we've ever felt more loved or rejected at the same time, which is just very, very sad. The whole approach has been tow- towards control as opposed to what is right to be done. Rest will not affect the federal designation historical district. All we want is to be able to care for our properties in the most efficient and effective way. Today's costs are so great that being a member of the local historical district is cost prohibitive. We just want the same rights as our next door neighbor, and we happen to be our own next door neighbor. We have examined and the HPC members in past and present have led in this letter writing campaign with untruths that have created this caustic environment. It's really saddened to all of us, and I feel sure you are saddened by it as well. After examining all of these issues, I hope you can understand that the property owners in Burlington, North Carolina are frustrated, exhausted with the HPC process. The potential upgrade of standards is only part of the question. The appointment of HPC members, their qualifications, and the city's continued investment. Is the city willing to invest to keep this up to date? Since nineteen ninety-five, that has not been the case. So the experience has taught us that that is the standard by which we live. It would be nice to have a friendly attitude towards innovative improvements instead of being classified as a red herring. Quite disappointing. I really want to say to you is the following. People ask me all the time, why does Glenraven exist after a hundred and forty years? Well, there's one simple answer. Every five to seven years, we look at ourselves and we ask ourselves difficult questions. What are we doing to maintain our competitiveness? What are we doing to treat people right? What are we doing to take care of our customers? And when we get hard answers to those questions, we make changes. I would say to you, this is a wake up call for the city of Burlington. If you don't believe you've got a problem, then just look at the caustic attitude that you have been subjected to in the last week. We have been subjected to exactly the same thing. And what is it around? It's around a group of people who want to invest in their own properties to try to make sure that we keep the value where it should be. I've asked you in the most humble way to accept our application. We're dedicated to this city. Our investment has proven that. And we will continue to invest in our city in every way, shape and form. We just want to be able to do it in the most efficient and effective way. It's just that simple, not complicated. Thank you for your time. I'm deeply appreciative of the Robinsons. Quite frankly, I could have just not said a single word because they said everything that needed to be said and did a fabulous job in presenting both the pros and the cons of the issue that we have at hand for us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments there. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the public comment portion of this item. We want to be mindful of everyone, obviously, we've got a large contingency of individuals. And we've received multiple emails, multiple letters. I think we've all been communicated with phone calls quite a bit. And we find ourselves on this council oftentimes periodically looking at competing interests. And it's important that we respect both sides and that we do it in a manner that's civil and in a manner that is respectful of everyone. I want to ask if we adhere to those standards tonight during the public comments section. Um, in addition, if, if you just simply oppose, please state such. If you have something different to add than others, we're gon- we're more than welcome to listen to that. But if it's going to be repetitive in nature, we get it, we understand. Um, just state how you feel about it. And, uh, we've got a time limit to each, uh, person that's speaking tonight. My clerk will have a timer. So we would appreciate everyone adhering to that in the essence of time. When you come forward to the podium, we ask that you state your name and you state your address. And, uh, feel free to speak at that one time. So we'll start on the left-hand side of the room. Yes, ma'am.
I was not going to speak tonight. My name is Vicki Vernon. And the historic district first meeting was held in my living room. I have been a member of the historic district since its inception, and I want to set the record straight on the future. There was a mention, and I don't have notes, and I'm angry, and so I'm going to probably jump all over everywhere, but I will do my best. When there was a comment about the apartments at Isley Place being part of the historic history, that was the Isley backyard. When the district was paid, that was part of the yard. It was not apartments, didn't um, change, which probably should have. If it had been enforced, our historic rules and regulations, then those apartments would not exist the way they look right now. But they were not enforced. Everybody had since nothing to figure out, but things were going to be along. As far as the Shell Station, there was one time, and we still would like to see, or at least I would, that Trolinger Street with Robert Stein's store and Ash McAdams, and all of that would be included in the historic district. That was a central part of the historic district. But Ash McAdams had orange aids and ice cream sodas, and you know it. And Robert Stein's store had everything in the world, and every kid in the neighborhood was there, including appliance. That's where you went up and got your refrigerator boxes when you went through the Fourth of July parade. All of that was there. And that would have been a really cool thing to have been included, and I still think it should be. Get rid of some of those plastic. As far as the delay here two months, I had almost a year. As far as cost increase, we did have a few things going on, such as COVID. We had a few things going on, such as increase in lumber prices. We had a few things going on like that with the labor prices. Yes, prices did go up. Um, I couldn't control that. We had been to the start. We have participated willingly. Not always smoothly, but willingly, we have participated. I have had approval. I have been to the meetings many, 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 many times. I have had to prove my points many, many times. You all have my letter, and it's pretty detailed about what I went through. However, I never once wanted to be removed from historical. I feel like it's important. I feel like it does create value in our neighborhoods. I just know the houses that sold in my neighborhood in the past two years are like tripled in price. I know my value, my tax value, and what my house is valued at on Zillow. I mean, it's low. If you look at them, there is a price increase. It isn't. They haven't gone down. There are both the family homes, which is one of the reasons why the historic district was born, to get, to keep the boarding houses, for lack of a better word, from pressing all the way through the neighborhood in these big old houses. The time on the market is slim and narrow. They're sold very quickly. I feel like that some of the information we have done has been misinterpreted.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I can do this in three. I'll get off of this. Michelle Cowbrake, seven fifteen West Front Street, and my husband Bill, the T W Patterson House on West Front Street. Original Robinson application stated they apply to be removed because it is disadvantageous to remain in the district and current standards limit their ability to make energy efficient updates. But all of their comments and statements during this process are directed at the Financial Department for said timing issues when their roof bailed in November twenty twenty. They applied for a COA to replace it in December, were approved on January twelfth of twenty-one. The Robinsons' roof hadn't been repaired since nineteen ninety-four. This is public record, and the Robinsons were responsible for that knowledge and to plan to replace it before it failed. That is not the responsibility of the Planning Department or the Historic Preservation Commission. The Robinsons were aware of the standards and process before purchase. Ms. Robinson has worked for Mr. Gant's company since her college intern days, and I'm sure that he warned her. Restoring, repairing and maintaining old houses are cheap and quick, and it's not for everyone. Roof, porches and foundation failures are, and overgrown shrubs don't happen overnight. It's the homeowner's duty to plan, budget, schedule, repair and replacements when they fail, before they fail. The Robinsons complained now that the standards and COA process is somehow responsible for additional expenses and damage during COVID, seen rings hollow. If the homeowners are not happy to live in the local historic district overlay, there is no reason to change the district for one roof. Mr. Gant's application clearly states that he wants the properties to be removed because it is no longer economically feasible to be part of the district. The only financial matter that he has cited is the replacement of a slate roof that he has claimed will cost two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. He's never applied for a roof replacement um, with an alternate material or produced any evidence that this is true. Replacement materials have recently been approved for slate and concrete roof tiles at HPC meetings that Mr. Gant has attended. So why hasn't he moved forward with the roof application? Mr. Gant seems most upset by the actual boundaries of the district and questions why certain properties were either included or excluded. His repeated question of why seems displaced after forty years after the district creation. Why didn't he ask then? Why didn't he ask his own mom, who was instrumental in the creation of the district and made sure that the very properties he wants to remove were included? We ask you to deny this request. Approval will be a slap in the face to homeowners with shallow pockets who have saved, worked skillfully and hard to create a beautiful neighborhood and an asset to grow.
Yes, ma'am.
I live at six oh seven West Street. I've attended both the HPC and zoning planning meetings related to the request for removal in the district, and both meetings had the opportunity to hear the statements from the applicants as they presented the rationale behind the request for removal. To summarize, it seemed to be that the argument is based upon delays and our negative experiences with the COA process and any residual impacts that we have caused monetary or otherwise. I did share at that time that I too had challenges with the process. However, this was due to a lack of knowledge and understanding. Having longed for these experiences of learning grown and now better understand what is required and how to proceed. Regarding the point on how antiquated the guidelines are, we all know that HPC has obtained required funding to address this issue. It is important to note, even considering these issues as a request for removal, both applicants have failed to have one single COA request denied. That includes Gant's request to demolish the historic property that he purchased with intent to destroy. That is now the hidden lot as a part of this request. That, that request was granted approval, yet both applicants complain that the process doesn't work and don't understand that. The concept that if their application is for removal is granted, you have no negative impact on the district is not correct. Repeatedly cited as the example of the Presbyterian Church, but that's not accurate also. One, it was previously shared, she had an HPC meeting by a witness who was present at the time that the church was removed because it was not yet fifty years old, which would be required for the historic status. Second, that's a church. These are three residential points and a building block. These are three residential points and a building block. This is mainly a residential zone Historic District. And two, who the removal of residential homes would set a dangerous precedent. And the thought that this approval would not prompt other residents to, you know, submit to be removed as well is not accurate, or that it won't have a domino effect. The first example of that is by the applicants themselves. Gant's application was submitted in May of 2021, and the Robinsons followed in June, same year, just one month apart. The second example is the fact that I shared at the zoning meeting that another resident of the Historic District has told me outright that if this removal is approved, their application for removal will be missed. Since then, they have voiced the same intent and sentiment with both the HPC and City Council. So that's a domino effect, if ever a same one. Lastly, I would like to offer a counterproposal. With the grant in place to revise the guidelines, why not instead have the time and energy to support these changes?
Thank you, ma'am.
Molly Whitlatch, I live at nine twelve West Davis Street. My neighbor Kristen Desler is not equal to here, so she asked me to speak for her as well. She's at nine eleven West Davis Street. We were directly next to these properties. Council has heard a lot about the standards, and as you know, we began the process to update these standards back in 2018. The UDO was amended in 2020 to require that they be updated every five years, but at that point, this process was already underway. And as you know, new standards are going to be in place this summer. I agree that standards should be updated, but that doesn't mean that the process isn't working. The vast majority of materials used in exterior work haven't changed over the years. And our HPC has done a really good job at applying these guidelines in a flexible way that meets the needs of homeowners, including allowing modern materials. Mr. Gant mentioned 3D print materials, but he never said he wanted to use those materials, and he's never submitted an application for it. But other people have, and they have been approved. In fact, every time these applicants have asked to use modern materials, it's been allowed. The Robinsons and the Gans were allowed to install replacement windows with modern materials. The Robinsons replaced the roof with modern material. And as mentioned earlier, multiple roofs have been allowed to be replaced with shingles. The Historic District is important and is a physical representation of our city's culture and history. The reason the HPC cares about materials and enclosing porches and things like that is because if enough of these details are lost, the district will lose its special character. We specifically brought our property into Historic District for those protections. If you allow these properties to be removed, then any property can just opt out of the district. This is not in line with the city's commitment to preservation, the UDO, or the property has to plan. The district is important to people. That's why so many people have attended these meetings and have sent letters. It's not out of fear. The concerns of the neighborhood are completely in line with the recommendations of the Historic Commission, the Zoning Commission, the consultant that we hired to pay $10,000 for, as well as Preservation North Carolina and Preservation Burlington. They have all recommended that this be denied. You are being asked to bring an end to the Historic District on the basis of one homeowner's experience that was the result of many factors that were out of the control of the city, including the homeowner's deferred maintenance, delay on submitting their application, weather, material pricing, COVID, and contractor availability during COVID. It does not make sense to make such a permanent change that affects the entire neighborhood on the basis of one incident. This is a nuclear option. This is not about the Gans or the Robinsons. Nobody hates them. The vote is about whether the city will continue to have a local Historic District. Without that district, the city will lose its CLG status and access to federal grants. It will also impact the city's accreditation for the North Carolina Main Street and Main Street USA programs, which is a source of funding for revitalizing downtown. So this is not just about Davis Street. It's not about these applicants. This will impact the entire city. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Larder. I currently live at five oh four Wildon Lane in Burlington. I previously owned a historic home on five oh four West Front Street. We owned it for 15 years, and so we sold it in 2021, which, by the way, would be a greatly considerable profit. I chose to purchase a Front Street home because it was an eligible Historic District. My prior two properties from Rhode Island were those in love with Historic Districts, and I learned firsthand the benefits of protections that that overlay provided to me as a homeowner. We really needed the insurance that our immediate neighbors wouldn't make cheap renovations and repairs in their homes. Many studies that we looked at and that have been shown here tonight show that intact Historic District adds value to all owners. However, this is especially important on the fringes of the neighborhood. So I mentioned, I live at five oh four West Front Street. I was not in the heart of the district. I was more on the gritty edges of the downtown. I really needed those assurances because I paid top dollar for my house, and I proceeded to put about $100,000 into it. So I really wouldn't have made that investment in my house or in Burlington, because we were looking all over the state if I hadn't had those assurances. And although I no longer live in the district, I am a districted patient, and I still benefit from it. Yet intact district brings quality to my life and has no raises the value of my own home. Some of the inaccuracies in some of the statements from the applicants have been touched upon by other speakers. I'd like to talk to someone about 3D printing. So 3D printing is a process. It is not a material. I'm one of the people that Pop Molly mentioned. When I needed to replicate trim on my house, I used 3D printing technology to replicate that trim. They needed in wood. They got approved, it went back on my house. So it was improved. So it is an approved process. I think it's clear that applicants don't have a full and clear understanding of these standards, and I hope that these inaccurate standards don't sway your opinion. I also want to mention there are no overlay rules regarding any color at all. You could put, Michelle tells you to be purple and yellow. Also, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that roof repair. I felt that was a little bit misleading. The Robinsons said that when they purchased our home in 2007, they knew it was in disrepair. In fact, they provided photos for their application that shows the roof was damaged and need patched in several places already. They need a home within Historic District, and that the roof and any other external repair would need to go through that single HPC approval process. The commission always meets monthly. That schedule is laid out on the city's website. Anybody can know in advance when they're going to be able to get that approval and then get it. Unfortunately, they decided to wait three years to address that roof. Technically, usually when you own a historic home, the first thing you do is keep the water out, you have to address the roof. But they decided to wait. They discovered the issue in November, waited until December to apply for permission. They did apply in December, and they got that application approved just very quickly on January 12th. So really, they alone controlled the timing of that application.
I have some matches relocated in Burlington in 2016 because housing costs were affordable. We thought it hurt the historic district that also caused a tax credit. We wanted to invest in an area that was protected from poor quality renovations, exterior changes that bothered buying our own home. We've invested more time, money, and energy to revitalize and renovation this home than we have in most of our lives. Two of these properties in the obligation of Michael and Reagan, no one lives there. The Reagan can afford to make this property. In fact, ten ten West Davis was purchased for $175,000, which was nineteen, just so they could tear it down the following year. It is now an empty lot, according to the application. It's also important to note that during the September HPC tour of these properties, the intention was stated that this empty lot returned to a parking lot, and the rest of it is separated. And to that fact, I also wanted to address those real estate agent tax values and the purchase of property during a short sale is not an accurate representation of how values and in a neighborhood. Our historic standards are the least restrictive of anywhere I have lived. These standards don't have any impact on interior changes, just exterior. So other removal of these properties for the interest of a few and in the financial interest of the hundreds of us have taken the chance and the best that we could historic in the district and downtown Burlington. The applicants complained about this process, but they don't know how to improve it. After failing to submit applications when they are required to, they are upset by their seatless in the city. There were no crimes, no jail time. They just needed to follow the rules that existed when they bought their property. This is no different than anyone else's city who have been treated for violating zoning or code ordinance. The applicants keep saying they are under attack. This is not about them. They bought the property in Historic District, now they want to take an action that's going to affect all of our properties. Of course, neighborhood is concerned. This is a community where everyone knows each other, has great pride in their neighborhood, and how special this area is. As mentioned earlier, this risk goes beyond Historic District. Burlington is out of crossroads tonight. They can either choose to support its honor for historic neighborhoods and those who apply existing zoning regulations, or reward those who try to follow the rules, say the system, and they found their property. Please make a note in that citation.
My name is John Callan. I live at twenty four fifty one Blenko Street. I counsel to be brief. I'm again a frequent book of properties from the Historic District. My wife and I have owned and resided in multiple properties, the two of the Historic District since 1993 for 30 years. When we purchased and moved into our first historic home at six nineteen West Front, it was in a dilapidated state, provided in the throw three low-income units. It was invested with rats, required years of work and money to restore and be fit for a family residing. Furthermore, a month after we moved in, I was raised from leaves of my front yard with my two and three-year-old sons at my side. It was witness to drugs being sold out of the home directly across the street. Every 15 minutes, a different car would pull up, drivers would come in the house and come back out five months later. That home was also eventually purchased and restored as an owner-occupied single-family dwelling. When we purchased the property at six nineteen West Front Street, we only did so know that it afforded some degree of protection by being in a neighborhood with Historic District zoning. We knew what it was, and that was part of our decision. I've also worked full-time for the past three years doing restoration work on historic properties, and worked on over 30 properties in Burlington's Historic Districts, including restoration the 68 original windows in the old Red Cross alley, now the old Red House on Davis Street. I've served on Burlington's Historic District Commission and have personally owned over 70 property owners in both brick and electric districts. Everyone I know who owns and resides in an older home in these districts knew that purchasing an older home could take more time and money to restore than maintain a newer home. Every one of these buyers also bought feeling that it is more likely that their investment will be protected because of the protection of the neighborhood by the Historic District zoning. You have Historic District, you have something that is special in your community. Historic Districts and their special zoning spread across the United States from the 60s and continues to the state to provide a needed counterbalance to the ever-present pressure from developers to demolish historic properties in neighborhoods where the opportunity to make money is often at the expense of conserving remaining historic buildings in traditional neighborhoods. I attended the Historic District and planning zoning commission meetings where this was discussed and heard much discussion about the guidelines being updated. As a long-term owner of two properties and doing extensive work throughout those districts, in my experience, the guidelines have no way in their institute quality restoration and maintenance work in a timely, cost-efficient manner. The idea is to try to preserve some of our history. The applicant, one of the applicants has applied for changes over 10 times in 30 years, and every question is approved by the HPC. Finally, having lived and worked in Historic Districts for most of my adult life, I've been meeting people kind of me since this issue has come up with valid concerns that allowing residential properties to be moved will lead to, I quote, "losing our Historic District." Many of these folks are owners of well-known community businesses or leaders of community-based organizations. In my opinion, they are right for the concern. I know of other properties in the district.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Norris. I live at twenty four sixteen Blenko Street. I want to be clear that I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody but myself. My reasons to oppose this are personal. I was born in Burlington and spent the first six years of my life in a house on Davis. And I frequently remember, I remember my parents frequently walking my brother and I down Davis to Fountain Place to feed the fish in the fountain, or to Williver Park to have birthday parties for the neighborhood kids, or down Front Street to have lunch with the firefighters at the fire station. And then we moved away. And I spent the next quarter of a century elsewhere in North Carolina. And eventually moved back to Burlington, to Blenko, to a Historic District. And one of the things that struck me moving back was how much Burlington still felt like home, because it was still the Burlington I remember. And to be clear, I didn't remember South Church Street. I didn't remember Hoppin' Road. I didn't remember Hall Hill Mall. What I remembered was those walks down Davis, down Fountain, down Front. And I went to visit friends who now live on Davis Street, and all those memories came flooding back because so many of those old homes are still there. One of the great joys I have to look forward to in life is I have a two-year-old son who turned two three days ago, another son on the way next month. And they will actually get to form the same memories of Burlington that I have, because it just so happens that their grandparents, my parents, have bought a house on Davis in Historic District. And so just like they walked me and my brother to the fountain to feed the fish, or Williver Park to play with friends, or to the firehouse to have lunch at the fireman, they'll walk my son past the exact same houses I admired as a child and form that same memory of home. That's what stands to be diminished when you remove homes from the Historic District. You lose that sense of place. You lose that sense of history. And Burlington becomes a little bit less Burlington. When you open it up to a historical development that's not consistent with the Historic Preservation. That's why I asked you to vote against this request for the properties.
Mary Beth Asher Lawson, four one one Tarpley Street. Stand to encourage you to vote against the motion tonight. I want to say to the Robinsons and to the Gans, I don't know you, but I would love to know you. I have had to apply for CLAs myself, and I want to just say to you, I think everybody in this room probably would say to you, yeah, we get it. We get it. There, the lot, the empty lot where the house got taken down, has a lot of questions that I hear coming up. And I would ask you tonight not to throw the baby out with the backwater. There are some significant issues that have been raised, and all of us who live in the district know that. And we heard Molly comment that the process is underway to remedy some of those concerns that have raised about the process. But that in no way, nothing we have heard tonight in any way that I can hear warrants removing these homes from Historic District. Thank you.
Anyone else on this side?
Thank you. My name is Reagan Mandela. My husband turns my own six oh five Backways, which is a shop house built in 1921. So it's a hundred and one years old. Been here since 1995. We have, over the past 27 years, we've gone and put sweat equity into our house, but also substantial amount of money. The house was in trouble this year, when we bought it. It's now in for its upkeep, repair, and modernization to the tune of almost $200,000. We don't have these pockets, but we have scrolled away to put this investment into our home. We're fortunate to be able to have, be able to afford it. We purchased that house knowing full well what's involved in purchasing a historic home. Also to seek approved COAs from the Star Commission and just hoping we're doing the right thing. The right thing for us has always been to make our house comfortable, appropriate to its history, and efficient for our needs, but also the right thing for our neighbors in our neighborhood. I realize that there was an unfortunate delay for Robinsons, and, you know, with the repair and the design, I understand your frustration, but to use that as one of the main reasons to request removal is unfair to us. It all has to be tested, yes, only if you know. And yes, sometimes there are delays with the total process. You know that full well. Over the years, we've found though that the HPC has become more understanding regarding the type of historic home and more amenable to approval would have otherwise not been approved in the past. A few years ago, the city council approved, after the historic preservation commission approved it also, the speed tables. This has helped us tremendously. We had a terrible debt, two of them on our block, within a matter of, I don't know, six, seven years. Finally, we got those speed tables. And Tuesday, I can guarantee you, I don't hear speeding cars down the path of it. That was very important. That's progress. There's a lot to be made. Yeah, we need to make some changes. We agree. If approval is given to remove their properties from this, what's going to happen? It's the right thing for them, but it's not for our community. Our property values, I think, will increase. If our neighbor receives approval to opt out of the historic district, for the size to tear it down, and she erects a house, a modern building, that's going to be a total departure. I'm not going to say it's going to happen, but what does happen? When you buy a historic home, you make a commitment to the community as well. If you're unable to keep that commitment, the right thing is not to seek removal from the local historic designation, but sell your home to someone who wants to keep the situation. But please, we are all committed to this. Thank you. Obviously, you're an opposition, so we are happy.
Good evening. My name is Willie Felton. I'm at seven one six West Davis Street. I basically embrace everything that's been said by many of the people over here. The only thing that I felt needed a little bit of clarification is I've heard the word fear used vis a vis obtaining letters from neighbors. I'm one of the fearful people who walked around and talked to neighbors, and I can guarantee you, there was no element that I did not mention taxes. It was a discussion about love for the district and respect for our neighbors. And so I challenged the sense that there was any kind of attempt to create a division in the neighborhood who was anything but that. We respect Gans, Robertson, Richardson. Well, we have had our own petitions to the historic commission. We've done what everybody else has talked about. So I just wanted to clarify that at one point. I think I have another neighbor who's going to speak via Zoom that might be able to speak at the same time. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Brayfield, and I live at eleven twelve West Davis Street. Just right up the hill or down the hill from the Robinsons and the Gans and stuff. I received a letter yesterday in the mail from supporters of our local historical district concerning the ongoing negotiations with the historic preservation commission and our neighbors two and three doors up. And I really haven't looked at a whole lot of what's going on with this. I probably should because I am two pounds south from the historical district and stuff. We try to take care of our homes, even though we're not in the historical district and stuff like that. I was very concerned when I received this letter and the fact that we received a letter, it wasn't signed other than it was just from this particular group. And it actually scared me because I felt like that we were personally being attacked by our neighbors. And I felt like that these people were being attacked by our neighbors. Just coming up was the fact that they said in this letter that they sent that, you know, two of the properties are owned by Glenn Raven and are not even occupied for the majority of the year. This is the company's guest house, and no one ever lives there. Whether a person lives there in the house or not, all time, is no one's concerned. That's not our responsibility. You know that. Number two, two of the empty lots in this request were houses the applicants have demolished in the last few years. I walk by that house on Davis Street almost every day. And the one that, you know, was next door needed to come down and stuff. I don't think there was any discussion that that needed to go. And it's like, what did the city do about that? Did they let that overgrow? Did we, I mean, you know, what happens with that? And that's not just in the historical district, but in other areas of Burlington that are also in historical districts and stuff. Then just a few of these other facts are on the sheet. It just really concerned me. I stayed up all night watching the YouTube. And I am fully aware that the historical stuff is important, and I agree a hundred percent. My house was built in nineteen thirty-eight, and we're only the second owners. We did a lot of work. There was nothing done in our house that we thought in there. But I'm not in historical district. It says applicants claim they wanted updated historical standards, but wasn't, but aren't willing to wait until July. I want to review standards to be implemented. Maybe if, you know, you know what the updated standards are going to be and understand that it's been more than twenty-five years since the last update, why not go ahead and share it or implement it now? Especially if everybody is all up in arms about everything that's going on. Number seven, the applicants are Glenn Raven, their retired president Glenn Raven, and an employee of Glenn Raven. They claim maintenance of their homes is unaffordable. Meanwhile, professionally armed crews and contractors are constantly doing work and upgrades of these houses. Again, it's no one else's business of what is concerned, considered affordable maintenance to someone else. That's not our responsibility. It is not our thing to do that. You're welcome. And the slumlord thing too, it's like really, we live right outside of that area. And the slumlord's thing, so I don't know who wrote the letter, but I'd love to talk to you about it.
Alan Gant, I represent the properties. Any questions? Please, what I'd like to speak to about today is intent, and I've heard a lot of rumors. And I just want to clear up some of that that's said. We run a multi-generational company. We've been here for multi-generations, and we plan to stay here for many generations in the future. Nothing we've done to the properties and nothing we've planned to do to the properties decreases in incremental value in a way. And our intent fully is to continue to be historic in nature and to only improve ourselves and the people around us and our neighbors. I don't personally own one of those properties, but I can tell you that we'll be here for a long time. So if there are rumors about apartment complexes or anything else that you hear, please feel free to ask the source. And we will gladly share our vision on any of these properties with anybody that asks. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Janice Burges, and I don't live in historic district. I live at six oh six West Bullemore. And my reason for being here is because of the letter that I received yesterday. And like the person who spoke earlier, it really alarmed me because it made statements that I knew absolutely were not true. So just a couple of things that I wanted to point out is that homes in the area, everybody's homes are selling for above value right now. So I don't think the historic district is the reason for that. But one of the reasons I would like to point out is because of Willbrook Arboretum. And that has increased all the values for that neighborhood. And the Willbrook Arboretum wouldn't exist if Mr. Gans in two thousand and seven didn't take the initiative to make our community look better when Honda Arrow almost chose not to come to Burlington because it was not a good looking community. Their wives didn't want to live here because they didn't like its appearance. So he took it upon himself to do something about that. And he, at the time, I worked for him, full disclosure, I worked for Glenn Raven, this company I ever worked for. And he put me in charge of putting together a board, a group of people that would form what has become the New Leagues Society. And that was established in two thousand and seven. Willbrook Arboretum is a two and a half million dollar investment in this city. And it all is right around the historic district. So I walk all over town. If you know me, you know that's true. And I see a lot of homes in the historic district that have trees that need to be removed. And I will assume that maybe sometimes that's because the people don't have the money to do it or have not the permission. Homeownership is always important, and it always takes extra money and extra time. So regardless whether you're in the historic, under those commissions or not, it's your home and you should be allowed to do it. I don't see any of these homes that have not been maintained in the original intent of that property. So thank you very much.
I'm on twelve thirteen Walker Avenue, Burlington. Full transparency, I'm a city employee. I serve all the citizens of Burlington, every one of you. And I'm happy and proud to do that. And I don't live anywhere near the historic district. But I want to get up here and sort of echo what Janet said about Mr. Alan Gant. I don't know this Mr. Gant, but I know that Mr. Gant up there on the screen. And I don't know him very well. I just know him from a professional standpoint, a lot of projects we've worked on together. And he's one person that has the utmost, best interest of our city, of anybody I've met that lives in this city. He's done more in his career to help unify this city and improve it in every way that he can. I hate to see him be malign because he wants to make improvement on his property. And I'm not taking sides on the historic issue. I love the historic district. I love everything about our city. I'm not taking sides one way or the other on that. I just want to speak up for Mr. Gant because I think he's being portrayed as a bad guy. And he is absolutely the opposite of a bad guy. He's one of the best guys we have in this city. Glenn Raven Mills, I'm proud that we have a company like Glenn Raven Mills in this county and city. Because if you manage a textile operation the way they do in this part of our history, it's amazing of what they do. It's a wonderful company. He's a restored, historic mill building that he had out there that was the first part of the mill that's part I know. I've never been in his house, but I know what he did with that mill building, and I know that what he's done with our city. Janet's mentioned the arboretum. There's lots of other projects, right up and down our street, University Boulevard, Rock, Willoughby, Neil, any of the areas, our city parks, and not only in Burlington, but other parts of Almacca County, other cities. And the New Leagues Society has improved that. So Mr. Gant is a wonderful person. He's done a lot of great things for our city. I hate he's involved in this issue about property, but I hate that anybody says anything bad about him because he certainly doesn't deserve it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying to speak. My name is Terri O'Cham. One of the people who's written letters. I'm sorry, not as a member of the historic district, but as someone who lives nearby and just a block from the Willbrook Park, which we love tremendously, and all of our neighbors do, and so we appreciate that very much. As I listen to everything this evening, I am greatly concerned that there seems to be a disconnect between everybody who really cares about and loves this community and loves their homes and loves the historic district, whether they want to not have the overlay or they want to continue to host the historic district. I would like to suggest and recommend, I would say deeply and profoundly against the application and to sincerely hope you vote against it. But in doing so, I would trust that as new members of this council, the mayor, the mayor pro temp, other members who are new, Mrs. Pykes has been with the council for a while, that we consider some of what Mr. Gant said when he indicated that the city just hadn't been doing its work and asked the question whether the city would really devote itself to what needs to be done and sustain what it might do because of any financial impact of the city. It seems to me that we're rushing this decision if it were to be in favor of these two applicants when there is work to be done and work to be done by the historic society. And there are new standards that are being considered and that will come in July. Why does this decision have to be made in anybody's favor or against anyone at this point when there is all that work to be done? So could we not come together in a manner in which Mr. Gant is asking and work together in a cooperative manner and look at the standards, look at all that needs to be done, and then come to any decision that might then be made? So I strongly recommend that you vote against it this evening in anticipation of all the work that can and should be done to solve the problem.
Anyone else on this set? Yes, sir.
I may not have a whole lot to add to this. I'm Robin Brizl, I live at eleven three West Davis Street. And I felt like I needed to be here, if nothing else, but to support the Gans and Robertson's. Because I have a bad feeling just from everything I've heard that management work has been made up. And I think that's wrong. I did sit in on one of the Zoom meetings. And quite honestly, I felt like Mr. Gant was really disrespected. He was not given time. He was cut off. It was just wrong the way that he was standing. And, you know, it's really a shame that it comes to this, that they have to ask me to remove from the historic district. And it's not because that they really want to. It's because, or I feel that it's not because they really want to. It's because the historic district has not kept up with the standards. If they truly haven't changed anything since nineteen ninety-five, then somebody somewhere has let the system down. And this is just not right for this kind of thing to happen. And yes, Mrs. Grayfield back here just talked about the letter that went out. That was probably the worst written letter I've ever seen. I'm sure all of you read it. I don't know who wrote it, but all it was was to cause a stir. And that's wrong in our community. I hope that we can get through this because I really support the historic district as a whole. It's something that's needed in order to keep our city and our areas nice. I live in this area, in that area or just outside of it. And I'd love to see that maintained, but I do understand why Alan wants to get out of there. Thank you.
That's all of the questions?
Yes.
Scott, I believe you were keeping track of raised hands. Is that right?
Yes. Mr. James Ullis is first up. Mr. Ullis, go ahead, please.
Can y'all, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
So my name is James Ullis. I'm at seventeen hundred West Front Street. And I'm actually the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I want to set the record straight. The Robinsons have attacked our commission saying that we are unfair and we're out to get them. You know, that to me is an attack on me and everybody on that commission that has worked hard to make sure that this town has a great historic district. So for her to say that is very hypocritical. You know, she talks about being attacked, but she's doing the same thing. And on the second note, with Mr. Gant, you know, he talks about, we can't talk about this. We can't do this. Well, as it's been pointed out, we are a quasi judicial board. So we are by law, state law, let's make that right, state law says we cannot speak to applicants unless there's an application. That's just state law, plain and simple. Second of all, third of all, you know, the historic district is part of all of Burlington. It's not just one little thing. The entire city of Burlington should be proud to have it. And by removing it would be just, you know, taking the cheap way out. So instead of the applicants coming to work with us, I'm more than happy to work with them. They haven't. They decided to go the easy way out. Also, I don't live in the historic district, but I'm near it and I have roots because my Also, I don't live in the historic district, but I'm near it and I have roots because my great grandfather, Dr. Carlisle, lived on Fountain Place and was one of this town's very doctors. So I know what historic is. And I just want to set the record straight. The Historic Preservation Commission is not out to get anybody. Never have. And to say that is just basically an attack. And in regards to like qualifications, to be honest, you know, I may not have an architectural, I may not have this. But let me tell you, I've been here 34 years. So I know what historic is. I'm a citizen of this community, just like anybody else that can be on it. So to just say that we need this, that's, you know, and, you know, I have talked with Mr. Gant. He called me when I was sick with COVID. And I had to tell him the same thing that I was told by the city attorney that I could not speak to him. So I just want the record to be set straight. And, you know, I implore all of you to do the same thing. You know, this is our town and it needs to be kept that way. So that's all I'm going to say on the matter. I apologize if this sounds brunt, but you're not going to attack me. Do not attack the commission. Do not attack me, period. Thank you.
There's clarification about this is not a quasi judicial matter. For everything that the nation, as well as the city has done here, it's all advisory. They are free to make that.
The only quasi judicial is Board of Justice.
Board of Justice, but this is also quasi judicial, okay? But not this particular subject matter.
Correct.
They are simply serving as an advisory role to the city council as its PNC. Correct. This is a good case. I'm glad they take the decision to do it and go through, do that. They have both. They have dual functions. They do COA process in and back quasi judicial. It would have been inappropriate to say that in a quasi judicial matter.
But it is not.
It is not. It is not. And
So that is correct.
I think there may have been confusion early on in the process. I don't think Mr. Gant indicated one way or the other what he intended to do. He did not file an application from the district at that point in time. And was still, I think, at spoken with. It's like I planned to say, I think he was contemplating coming back for the COA, do some group work. That's what I think we're calling it. So they do have a dual function, but on this matter here, it's strictly by role. They're free.
Anyone else?
I believe there's three.
We do have a few, Mayor Council. The next up is Ms. Julie Budd. Ms. Budd, please go ahead.
Yes. Hello. I am Julie Budd. I live at 324 Hillcrest Avenue. So it's just on the outskirts of the historic district. And I just wanted to express my appreciation for those folks who back in the eighties had the foresight and the fortitude to create the historic district. Because it has attracted people to our city that love history and that have the wherewithal to work on a, you know, an older house and to make those investments. And so it's just exciting to see people loving their houses and taking care of them. And so just great to see all the energy and just wanted to really thank Mr. Gant for bringing up 3D printing. Because we were designated a maker city, you know, several years ago. And we did have a maker space that was sharing that wonderful technology of 3D printing. So even the, even like Blessed Sacrament School, the kids are doing 3D printing. At the Burlington School, they have a maker space. So we need to be embracing these technologies. So I know that our city council knows about these things. And I'm just excited that we're going to be, you know, looking for ways to make the standards more appropriate for today. But there is an old, an old technology that I have heard of. It's called a TARP. And so I think that from what I understand, the historic commission does allow for emergency roof repair. So I do want everyone to understand that, you know, that people can take care of their houses and work with the commission. And we can embrace this new technology. And I'm just really happy to be, you know, J sent to the historic district. And I'm concerned that if this does get approved, that other people will request to be taken out. And that will then trigger the studies, the $10,000 studies that will then be, you know, just more expense to the, to the city. So thanks so much.
Next up is Ms. Kristy Benson. Ms. Benson, go ahead.
Hey there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for letting this meeting go late so we could hear from everybody. We really appreciate it. I live at 622 West Davis Street in the historic district. And I wanted to just focus on some things that I have not heard anyone else say, because I know you don't, you know, you don't really need repetition of the valid points that have already been made. So one of the key things I want to emphasize is that if you tick back through every single argument that both of the applicants have made, any single house, pretty much every house in the historic district could make the same argument. And so what I'm trying to say is those arguments aren't unique to these particular properties being removed. It creates a precedent that will end up being binding for all future decisions and make it incredibly easy from a legal standpoint to just dismantle the entire historic district. So I just wish you would think about this decision that you have to make as a decision, not about these properties, but about whether you value a historic district at all. Because there is no way that this historic district will survive. All individual property owners can just elect their way out of it. And the last thing is to highlight a quagmire, a real quagmire of legal issues that nobody has mentioned here. And that is that I really urge you not to vote on this at all until you've really dug deep into the legal problems. This would create equal protection problems. It creates due process problems because you'd have to allow anybody who applies for a similar removal in the future. And it creates a spot zoning issue. And I've heard some people in the city government suggest that spot zoning wouldn't apply because the underlying zoning stays residential. But the precedent doesn't seem to support that. And there are four factors that you have to consider in spot zoning, including whether this would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which it clearly is not, and how it would impact the community as a whole. How dismantling the historic district by allowing anyone to opt out of it would not be in the interest of the community as a whole. And so I just hope you'll think of it that way and know that the decision that you make actually gets a higher standard of review if there's ever an appeal of your decision, which seems likely to me. And it means you have to affirmatively justify your decision with evidence. You have to tick through all four factors of the spot zoning rules, for example. All the equal protection and other issues, you will have to affirmatively justify in the record what supported a decision to approve this. And that's going to be awfully hard to do when the Historic Preservation Commission, the consultant the city hired, the planning commission, and every single advisory board position that's come before you, before this has opposed this proposal. So I really hope you'll think of those legal issues. Thank you.
Next up is R. M. Blanc. Please go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Rachel Blanc. I reside at 2416 Glen Coast Street in Burlington. In addition to being a resident of one of Burlington's historic districts, I'm also an attorney that serves the needs of closely held businesses, many of them small businesses in Alamance County and Burlington. As we heard on another matter tonight in front of this council, grants and other funding vehicles are a really important part of supporting businesses in Burlington. These types of state and federal grants are imperative in continuing to support small business, particularly in our downtown area. One of the ways that Burlington small businesses have gained access to these funding vehicles is through funding through the National Park Service, accreditation through NC Main Street and Main Street America programs. Burlington has enjoyed NC Main Street accreditation since 1988 and also enjoys accreditation with the Main Street America program. Through these programs, the city and local businesses enjoy access to these grant programs. Accreditation for these programs and continued access to the funding vehicles is dependent on the city of Burlington retaining its CLG or Certified Local Government status. In order to retain its CLG status with the National Park Service, Burlington must maintain its historic district commission and protection of local historic resources. Should this council grant these applications to be removed, the erosion of the historic district follows. If the historic district is dismantled, the city will lose its CLG status accreditation for the NC Main Street and Main Street America programs. And in turn, the loss of valuable funding vehicles for Main Street Development in Burlington, which negatively impacts local small businesses and our entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, was that all of our comment?
We had one more. I'm looking for her right now. Ms. Sue Lizara. I don't know if she dropped off or not. I don't see her. Ms. Lizara, can you put your hand up? I do not see her on the list. She may have dropped off. There she goes. Bringing her right now. Ms. Lizara, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. Mayor Butler, members of City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I live at 727 West Davis Street. I purchased my property in 2018. Truly, I invested and then I renovated this property to Secretary of Interior Standards precisely because the historic district of West Davis and Fountain Place has local zoning overlay. Those protections are important to me because I have lived with those overlays in historic homes and without them in the past. As you may know, the National Register offers no protections to property owners or to the city against misguided alterations to private property. The national, that's not the function of the National Register. The way to do that legally, the only legal tool to do that at the local level is local zoning overlay for private property. So that's why we're so interested in this, in this application. Burlington has six districts, four of which are not covered by overlay. All you have to do is make a drive around and see the profound differences for yourself and the integrity of those, those six districts, the two versus the four. I'd like to speak and reiterate what Mr. Pelton said about gathering the signatures on the letters because I personally walked Tollinger and Fountain Place. I was, because of COVID happening soon after I bought my property, I was not acquainted with very many neighbors at all. But I knocked on doors. I introduced myself and I asked, have you heard about a proposal to remove four large properties from the west end of our local historic district? And most people had not heard. A few had heard. But immediately, everybody was overwhelmingly ready to oppose this measure. One person declined and on my route and approximately 50 people signed. So I'm here to testify that this was an easy task to collect these signatures. And I certainly did not pressure anyone. And I know most of the people who are out there on other blocks, I do not believe that there was any false or misleading information given by us. Now, maybe the residents came up with their own idea of what would happen and repeated that in the neighborhood. But we stuck to, you know, the facts of this was a proposal. And when I was asked what will happen, I said, I don't know. I do not know the intentions of it.
Thank you.
And everybody, Scott?
That is, that's it for tonight on this topic.
So we all. All right. Any questions from the council members to the petitioners here? This time I'll entertain a motion. We'd like to close the public here. Got a motion, close the public hearing. Is your second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by aye. Can you post? Thank you. I am going to go off script just a little bit and share something. I think it's important. And I want to do so just to set the record straight on a couple of things myself. There are some letters that went out. There are a lot of phone calls. I've received several phone calls, emails. There have been Facebook posts. There's been letters shared from news media that I was getting copies of. Some of you that spoke tonight called me, emailed. And I appreciate that. And I did indeed receive the fact sheet on taking your property back, which I found nothing in it. Very accurate. But what was accurate, and I do want to disclose this and have a comment about it. I think supportive. It came to my attention when I saw these letters that someone was very much trying to politicize this. And it made reference to Mr. Gant and his campaign contribution, certainly to my campaign. He did support me, that is a fact. But most importantly, forget the campaign contribution. Alan Gant's friend. And my relationship with Alan Gant goes back to 1991, when he put his hands on my shoulders in a leadership Alamance class. And I wouldn't be sitting here tonight if it was not for Alan Gant. So how we tie campaign contributions to a rezoning? I've done this for 14 years. And why must a contribution automatically be tied to corruption? Why can't it just be supported by a good human being? Why can't it be supported by someone who tries to take care of the family, represents the city well? My entire family does. Loves our city staff, respects these colleagues up here and tries to make good decisions based on facts, not emotions. Why must it be political? When I ran for office, I said, we need you all to unite firms. When you're united firms, it's to talk about things in perspective. And just like I asked everybody before we started this process. And I appreciate it. This is a complicated matter. But campaign contributions and the status of Mr. Gant does not give anyone the right to demonize him or anything. This is a really complicated matter. Nothing more, nothing less. It's a reason. And I believe that I represent everybody in this room, whether your interests compete or not. And I'm proud of my record in voting. And no one's ever asked me, no one ever in my career has asked me to vote a certain way that gave me money. I can look at everyone in their face and Mr. Gant not one time has asked me. So that was certain, not one time. And I know it well enough to know that he would not. As a matter of fact, the two or three meetings that I had with the city staff over the last 10 or 11 months, we're not rushing to this decision, by the way. This has been a 10 or 11 month process. But he was very collagetic, but he was even putting his counsel in his position. So this is highly unusual. And for me to feel like I need to make those statements are highly unusual. But I found it very disrespectful that I would be accused of being unethical, immoral for doing something illegal for a rezoning in the historic district. What are we doing? What have we come to? Think about that. Who are we? Who are we? We're doing that. Name something factual. Don't just surmise something based on a campaign contribution that is public record. For a man that has supported me since nineteen ninety-one. Many of you in this room, I look around and work on campaigns, mine and others. It's what we do with the city of Burlington. We know everybody. We know each other. Most of you in this room, I either know or know their neighbors. So let's love each other the right way. Let's not spread. Items around like this. It's not, it's not what we need to do. It really isn't. And. The last thing I'll say about that is I'm really concerned about the fact that it's gotten to this level. Over an overlay rezoning. Is this about historical preservation or is this about control? Because this is fear control. One hundred percent. That's my comments on that. What my colleagues.
Mayor, I think it's. Exactly, we don't miss that. I think everybody, you know, the advocates and all people fucking like, and it's really good you. Identify to nature that. That need, you know, we need more information. And I certainly do want. Having said that, I'm not prepared to make the decision on the subject issue, whether to act on the, you know, the application. I honestly believe that if we allow the study to proceed and take place and report back the information to this body. I think all of us would be better prepared to make the appropriate decision, which, which would be best for all of the citizens that are involved in this. And therefore, having said this, I, I would like to make a motion that we delay any decision on this until the study. Study is presented back to this council. And uh, which I understand will lead to why, and you know, and I would ask that they act, so that people would know. Uh, sort of a deadline that it'd be set on for August meeting, people doing the study. Really have to, you know, sort of report out pretty soon, because I know, I know all of you would like to have a decision more so sooner than later. We would too, but I want to be informed that there are some issues identified, also some legal issues that is identified that I'd like to get a grip on myself, so. It's fair that that being of a procedural nature, uh I, I would ask that be considered, you know. Take presence of any substantive issue that, that could affect the voting on the application.
So is there, I'm sorry, is there a, uh? Any way that we can speak this process? Why, why don't you lie in that?
So July is, is, but there isn't a magical day. We do have a deadline by the end of September. That's when the grant. Deadline for the state is up. So uh staff um prepare the timelines, be able to incorporate public comments, the advisory board. Uh, composition of the historic preservation commission. And then also account for the matter to those who are planning zoning permission. It's got to go. Through that cycle as a renovation and then to City Council. It's a, it's an ambitious timeframe.
July is.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, yeah, I know. I'm sure.
You know, I, I, let me say this. She mentioned the letter. I've been sitting up here since two thousand and two. Manager version, usually like when I retire, I support technical council. I don't recall it as a. It, it appears to me that all people in the profession are good people, but it's, it's just sort of a. The situation escalated so quickly. But I think comments are being made, no matter which way, which side you're on. It's just. Not even realistic. This is a bigger picture than just this process. The question that I think that we have to look at also is. That the boards, we, we appoint boards of commission members each year. Honestly. Unfortunately, in many situations, we have to struggle with it to volunteer to be on boards of commissions. I wish that was not the case, but it is the case. Now, with that being said, though. I think that. This board, which was quite a traditional authority and obviously a board of adjustment. May have more legal control, but frankly. P and Z probably actually deal with more direct issues than any board we have in the city world. Not quite that traditional. Just makes sense. I think what's happened here though now is this thing has got personal. To so many people. And I understand that. I do, I, I, I do. Personal in the sense that it started attacking people for, for what reason, I'm not sure, or unless people feel threatened. And threatened for what you believe in is one thing, or threat of the power you might have is another thing. I'm not sure. But that was never intentional by you. I think I can speak for these five people. Only a party that's always threatening, but not always. Now, we're all big boys and girls. We're up here. We know we're going to take criticism. And you look you in the face and tell you, that's fine. That's part of the process. Okay? But I think this kind of environment is not ten well to lead to any good decision made right now. This is not, I mean frankly, it's just a little bit, it's just got out of the scope of what we do as a city. To have citizens just basically pulling after each other for what reason? Everybody has a right there, okay? Everybody has a right, quite frankly, to property rights. Yeah, I mean, if you really want to get down to the basics of this thing, it's about individual property rights. So, you know, I think Bob's motion, I think is well stated. I think we need some time. It needs to cool heads, needs to come to the middle here. We need to get information back from these standards. And our objective should be to be able to find a way to go forward. Without this split that appears just going through basically now. And how that's going to be done, I'm not sure yet, but there's some reasonable avenues we could certainly look into to make this better, a better process. And, you know. As I said, all five of us up here, I'm going to stick all five of the people now, we know what this is about. So, you know, he can say things he wants, but make sure you have your back straight. It's what I think ends up happening is on both sides of this thing now is the people make statements that's not actually true, it's personally based, making motions at a time. It leads to a separation, still trying to find a way to make a decision. If we're going to fit the city. And that's our own responsibility here to sit. All the city. All the residents. And we certainly don't want to see that uh be underestimated in terms of what are, really what we're here to do.
Just have a second.
No, well, not really. It's, it's, it's a.
That was a heavy part. That was a heavy part.
Yeah, it is a second in some ways, but what I'm trying to make to you guys is this, uh. This thing is, will take some time. It probably needs some time right now, but I think it's cooled down some. So the process, I think the motion Bob has made makes, makes very good sense in the sense that you get the uh standard review by. You see what is said, and then you take this thing from there. Everyone's not going to be happy. Unfortunately, it's not going to happen. Wish you luck with that. It's not going to happen.
So if it goes one way, we're corrupt. If it goes another way, we're. People are happy. Is that the way it goes?
Well, I'm not going quite that far down. But I'm saying that.
That's what the letter said, right? Is that right, Mayor?
Pretty much.
That's what I mean.
But that's another thing. I know I said a lot of motions.
Well, I asked that because somebody moved the table.
That's like what?
With the table.
In effect, that is. That is what we're doing today. And that will let me take time certain about.
I, I think, I think it's be good to set a date certain, that way we know what we're working for, how we're going to do it in depth. I'd like to, I'd like it to be set on for, we, and all of them, I think we have one and all.
The midnight, it'll be the. Someone put that date back.
That's the August sixteenth.
August sixteenth. So the motion would be to table any action on this item until uh August sixteenth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, second to that. Any questions from, from anyone?
No, but I would like to make it on that. I, I'm so impressed with everyone here tonight and the way you conducted yourselves and the way you engaged in this issue. The Robinsons did an amazing job, as far as I'm concerned, in explaining what your point of view was and researched all of it. Alan Gant talked to me, but months and months ago about this. And it's really wonderful for us to have citizens who come to us and say, there's some things that need to be looked at. That we really need to pay attention here. If, if you can imagine the portfolio that City Council members have. It's, it's pretty overwhelming that when you just start with historic properties and all of the guidelines that go in that. Planning and zoning, water resources, everything that we try to get a handle on so that we're making informed decisions. Uh, it's so vital for citizens to tell us where they think things may not be working. And so I, I really appreciate this conversation. I just want to say that before we all disperse. And probably feel a little disappointed, but I think that tabling this to a future date is the right thing to do. And so I'm grateful for that as well.
Turn it against, this is the ninth gen. This is saying, that's the same thing that uh the last teaching I had, the previous against agenda. So, yeah, this, it's, it's. It is. So we have a motion on the table on second to delay action on this item until August the sixteenth, all in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your comment and everyone's. You may need a break. So, well. We'll just step out, we'll come back. We'll come right back. Thank you. Well. A public hearing has been set to resume the property zone, medium density residential or MTR, light industrial L I. Property is located on the south side of intersection of Danbrook Road and Bonner Bridge Parkway, addressed to Zero Danbrook Road and consists Valhalla County Tax Identification Number one oh six nine five two. At this time, council recognizes Conrad, I'll need our planning manager to go over the site.
This is a request to resume property, terms of medium density residential, MTR, light industrial L I. From the area, this is the property located on the south side of intersection Danbrook Road and Bonner Bridge Parkway. It says Valhalla County Tax Identification Number one zero six nine five. This request is a conventional resoning, which is strictly a request to change the property's zoning district from one district to another. All uses for the requested zoning district can be viewed table four point two C, principal use table noted as A, C, P, or S, should be considered as potential uses for this property. A conventional resoning request does not restrict types of uses, nor does it have an associated concept. Future development of the site will require compliance with the U D O and will require approval from the technical review committee. The future land map calls for this area to be business park, light industrial. Staff finds that this proposed resoning request to light industrial is consistent with the future land use plan. At their February twenty eighth meeting, the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request. Staff presented the signing to council at the March first twenty twenty two meeting, and staff is recommending approval for consistency statement sheet option one. Staff and the applicants represented, Mr. Matt Wall, are available. The council has any questions?
Thank you, Conrad. Anyone have any questions, Conrad? Not unless there's Paul here.
Love Matt. Excuse my legs a little bit. Members of the council, good evening. My name is Matt Wall, address thirty four fifty three Forest Hill. That's not my residence, that's my office, but I spend more time there than that. I do appear on behalf of the applicant for this resoning application. And appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in favor of this resoning request. We appreciate, first of all, the work that staff has done in building together this this report. They've been very thorough. We appreciate their recommendation. We also appreciate the attention and consideration that was provided by the planning and zoning media there. They're standing back on February, I think it's February twenty eighth, which they recommend is approved. Briefly, as Conrad said, this property is envisioned by the city in its future land use plan to be a light industrial area. This property and the property is immediately surrounded. It is currently medium dense in residence. And our request is merely consistent and complies with what is the future land use plan. And it is also complementary with other existing uses of that area and joint properties. If the council will note, I probably aren't noticed, but that the immediate property immediately joining, I guess, sort of southwest, this sort of fire section. Across the street where the T intersection of Danbrook and Bonner Bridge Parkway is, there is a self-storage facility. Across there. So there are already some some uses in this in this area that would be consistent with what the plan is. And we are asked that the council resone this to be consistent with that plan. And that's our focus. We did conduct, and I don't think it was required by the procedures in the council's manual, a neighborhood information, trying to be proactive and to be transparent and to provide information to folks that might have some interest. We sent out, and I think it's in your packet there, not only a letter that was sent out by Mr. Patel, who, by the way, was not able to be here this evening. His father died last weekend, so he's not he's not able to attend at night. But he is the one who sent the letter. And it talked about the issues related to this, what the plan was for the property. Now, again, as Conrad said, this is a straight up conventional resoning. It's not a conditional resoning. But we thought that in the interest of trying to let the community, that area, know what the plan was, what the design is, and nothing's a hundred percent, it might change. As Conrad also said, there's lots of uses that could be available once it's resented. But we wanted that that area, that neighborhood, to know what was the plan for this property that he had. And that's where that was the discussion about that plan and that letter. In any event, there was one letter that was submitted prior to the planning and zoning. Well, let me get back to the meeting for a sec. We did have that meeting back in January. Of the twenty or so letters, I think, that were sent out, we had one one neighbor to show up. And they're here tonight, actually, the Hammond's. They showed up. And they did not express any objection. I don't know if they're going to speak tonight or not, but they may. And they they own the property that's essentially the south of the southeast of this property. There was a letter that was presented prior to, sent in prior to the city council, excuse me, planning and zoning meeting. And I think that's in your packet, you probably read it. By our calculations, that property owners, the property which that person owns, is roughly half a mile from the site that we're requesting to be resented. But there were some issues that were brought up that related to noise, that related to lighting and traffic, those kinds of things. And I think also in your packet, you have a copy of a report that was somewhat done at the last minute prior to planning. An engineer that is representing the applicant as well, Chad Hafner. Chad did noise, noise study, a report, a comparison, a noise comparison of noise levels at the property that we had or near the property of the letter, person who wrote the letter to complain and object with the property that is subject to the consent. And I think Chad's available on Zoom if there's any questions for him about that and the other, some of the engineering or technical things. There was also some some concern, a legitimate concern frankly, about possible traffic issues. And we had already addressed some of those at the PAC meeting that was done before we went to the point of doing the application and even after, or before we had a neighborhood information. The A T expressed a concern about having the entrance and exit to whatever is is put on property, whatever it is it's used for, as far away from the Danbrook Road intersection as possible to alleviate traffic concerns. We have tried to include that in our plans and the design that we're working on for if it win this this property. There were some questions about lighting and those kinds of things. But all, I think the bottom line is, for all of those concerns, and as Conrad said, those things will be addressed when it gets to that point, and having site plans and design plans and going through with the city's requirements of the TRC and things like that, those would be addressed. As Conrad said and stated in the background of the of the report that staff prepared, future development of the property would require further staff review at the building permit and/or TRC. So a lot of these issues, we believe, will be addressed once a plan is proposed, if this if this resoning, this is. I did get tonight, or after six o'clock, a couple of emails, a couple of emails that have been submitted. There, I'm not sure where those folks live. I don't know if they were, if there was addresses put on there, but, you know, and those were issues that I think, again, would be developed, would be dealt with when you get to the issue of how the property is to be developed and what the design and the site plan and everything. So it is within, what we're requesting is what the city's plan calls for, if this property is light industrial. So that's that's our report and ask for the council.
Any questions, Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
This item is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open it forward for public comments. Anybody on this side of the room that would like to speak, open comments. Please state your name and address and.
My name's Charlie Beza, I live eleven thirty four Garraway Street in Burlington. First off, being council members, thanks for the town tonight. So while I'm personally a fan of a gas station, I would say my wife, my wallet, and my neighbors are not as excited about it as I am. My particular, detaching myself from my particular love of snacks, energy drinks, and my two four horsepower cars, love premium gasoline, I would like to request that all the council members vote against this particular resoning request. Here's why. So doing some surface level research, when something is zone L I, any number of businesses can be placed there. Just basic real estate studies show that anything within six hundred meters of a gas station, immediate, in terms of residential properties, immediately loses value between one and sixteen percent. At this time, I know there is two further communities planning that aren't related to McIntosh that are long Bonner Bridge behind there. There's also the elementary school there, Bucko Village Apartments, along with, I would say, roughly seventy five to eighty percent of residents of McIntosh who go through that particular shop late in any given day, which represents anywhere from three to five percent of Burlington as a whole. So a gas station located at the corner of the intersection of Danbrook and Bonner Bridge, that proximity to University Boulevard light, I don't necessarily know if the traffic study would really support that long term. There's also going to be somewhere between a thousand and twelve hundred new individual residents that are going to move into that community area along Bonner Bridge in the next three years. So there's a underlying impact that is not being taken into account with this particular request. There's also data that shows any hospital within one mile of a hospital, or excuse me, any residents within one mile of a hospital have dropped some property value by roughly three percent. That is actually compounded for any proper property between the gas station and the R and C. There's also three other potential locations that this gas station could be placed at, in University Boulevard. I realize this is only for rezoning, but there has been expressed, you know, letter went out about what they wanted to put at this intersection. There would be no rezoning for requests for any of the alternative locations. They're all within a mile of that exact spot, and they're all within a mile of X one four one forty one. One of them is already zoned that way, that, I mean, it's a perfectly undeveloped corner that somebody could drop a gas station. So from that standpoint, I don't know about, the staff looked into this quite better, left in the package from Mr. Wall's presentation or whatever study you guys have. I hadn't seen that yet, but the traffic environmental aspects, I think, long term, have not been taken into consideration, particularly how it can affect both incoming new residents and residents aren't there. Because the effect of the real estate property value drop is going to go into the first presence McIntosh, which will be in Colorado. The other half of this is, I don't, and this is my lack of knowledge on zoning. I don't understand the need for this particular property to be developed at this time. I realize the city's future plans for it can those track with that plan. I don't necessarily disagree with the plan, but I think a gas station is the wrong thing to put there.
Thank you. Talking about McIntosh, I hear over the thing you were asking. Over the, I think McIntosh is now at eighty one percent of that. That's top of the gauge. Plans called for additional. Plan staff, plans called for additional, the apartments and condos. Here, very close to schools, is that correct?
So the. Somewhere, our G I S, those are G I S team did create some, a map showing some of the undeveloped land currently in the area, some developable land, which shows the other properties are a light green. This is the property in question, white green, are being developed, and those green areas, and the solid green are currently developed. Terms of the future planning staff currently has submittals for a single family attached animal product just south of this property. We also do have a planned development that's happening, that will continue further down across Bonner Bridge. And staff did recently approve a apartment complex further down towards. McIntosh Drive and Bonner Bridge. So there is some mostly residential involvement occurring along along this area.
I have a question on, I think, sound, and I live in that. Come to the. We usually have two seven. And then four oh two seven, commentary, nineteen, McIntosh. I also happen to be on board with the records, Matt, H O A. And we received the letter, our H O A manager received the letter. Probably, I guess it was Thursday or Friday this week, this past week. And there is a planned meeting at the Millbrook Apartment Complex in their clubhouse to discuss the possibility of a rezoning of the properties across the street. It would be, I would think, the south side, same side as the gas station property is. And it's called the Moody's Property Properties. There's three properties up for sale there, seventeen acres of land. And the zoning, what they're looking for is home by family. So it looks like they want to expand Millbrook, Milltown to problems there. So don't know how big of a complex they're opposing, but the one they have there now is two hundred and eighty eight apartments. Now, two hundred and eighty eight apartments, one point five car parking spots. You can imagine what it's going to do to increase the traffic coming on Mont bridge. The meeting is on the twenty fifth of this month. In fact, Mr. Peterson didn't even know about it until I was told. And just want you to take that into consideration too, that the future development of the lands that are being sold there will really bring up the density, people and cars coming on.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Like speak. Anyone on this side?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Oswald. I live at nineteen sixty West Buckville Road, which is, I believe, I'm new to the area. I grew up in Alaman's County, I'm on Eastern Alaman's, moved back here after, you know, stayed for a long time. My family bought a home at the back of West Buckville Road, which I drove by probably a thousand times, not even knowing that it was even a private drive there. So I think that we and the other five to six single family homes that lived back there are the first single family residences. As you come down Bonner Bridge, drove past the B storage place and wherever they went with this gas station. And there has been notice of, of this, you know, planned gas station. I found out about it this morning, about this meeting at 10:57 a.m., when somebody who lives two and a half miles from this intersection in McIntosh let me know there was a meeting to discuss a gas station that's going to be less than a mile of my home. Everybody else, from what I understand, who lives down in that development with us, and I should say, I know for sure that one person did not know about it, my neighbor David. He couldn't be here tonight. He had another meeting that he had to go to, but it, it, it just, it seems kind of strange. I, I don't know how these things work. I'm new to zoning, I'm new to, you know, city government and how these things go, but it just seems odd that you wouldn't let people know who, who live right there about a neighborhood meeting, and you, you would let people know who live two and a half miles down the road. And the same thing happened with this planned meeting next week that's going to involve a townhouse development that's going to be about a quarter of a mile from my home where I live with my two little girls and my wife. They don't let us know. You're invited to that meeting. I, I don't think anybody who lives in our entire street knew about this meeting until about 11 a.m. this morning, when I got a text from somebody who lives two and a half miles down the street over by Clearwater Way. So my, my point is, I think people in the community should be able to have a voice in what happens in their community, particularly when it affects them. I run up and down Bonner Bridge Road. I walk up and down with my daughter. She rides her little Strider bike. She's not old enough yet to be getting on her pedal biking and rolling down the road. We go up and down that road, people fly through there. They fly through there. That speed limit says 35, but that's just, that's a joke. I've never seen a police officer on that road watching for anybody going on the speed limit either. And there's going to be a lot, a lot more traffic. And I just think that the people who live there should be able to have a voice in what happens. So I would just ask, I, I don't know how these things work, but if you give us some more time, because I think some other people have some voices about this, and they would want to be heard. Because it's, it's not just me, but I live there. I care about this place. And yeah, that's going to be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Conrad, could you address briefly how we do the other side?
Yeah, for the record, staff, staff, let's see, public noticing, we post the properties for, in advance of the state law requires a ten, no less than 10 days and no more than 25 days for property proposed, and so staff does post the sign, or post it for both planning and zoning commission, as well as the council. Then staff does conduct a 300-foot radius buffer around the property question, and we do mail, we mail property owners. So some folks may not be within that buffer, but we hope that we capture their, their attention through posting the properties they drive by.
So the posting of the property is an alert to someone driving by, that there's a concern here, there's something happening. Is the telephone, it used to be the telephone number of the city was on these signs. Is that true today?
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's right next to my house.
Okay.
That zoning sign with phone number is there.
Okay, so 300 feet, okay, got it.
Thank you.
I think there's a couple of versions, at least one vertical.
Okay.
This is Jenna Roni. Please go ahead.
Yes, my name's Jenna Roni. I live at 1054 Card Ross Street in the back of the McIntosh community. And I just want to echo the sentiments that have already been shared in that I feel like due diligence wasn't done in notifying the McIntosh community. I understand that it's already been shared that they, they notify residents or community members with a certain barrier, but that direct property is a huge hindrance potentially to the residents that live in this community. We already have significant trafficking issues, having that as the primary entrance in and out of the neighborhood. And as Mr. Beasley already shared, you know, that would make a significant impact to our mornings where we've already had a lot of hits in this area. I can speak at least for some of the residents in that the apartment complexes that have already been approved and built across from the elementary school. Many residents in McIntosh were not on board with that plan. That was actually a split decision by the city council and was broken by the ma, as a tie by the mayor at the time. And a lot of residents were very upset about that, at the influx of cars and traffic into this area. And I can speak as a mother going through that area every morning. It is already significantly congested. And so now you take that piece of the puzzle and add an additional congestion at the core entrance in and out of the community. There is the Springwood exit in the back, but to be honest, I can guarantee you a small percentage of traffic uses that in the morning times, because I live on the backside going past that exit every day. And I just have significant concerns about the trafficking and the flow in that area, especially with the other proposed projects. And my bigger concern, which is more for the zoning committee, is how exactly that that area got slated for light industrial for the land use plan, and was that ever discussed with the McIntosh community as a whole? Because I don't believe the residents that live and support this area would agree to have that area zoned for future use as light industrial, as Mr. Beasley echoed earlier as well. So I just wanted to share those sentiments. I think that if you have a, something that's being rezoned at that area, that's going to be a direct impact to all the residents who live behind that area on Bonner Bridge. So it should not have been a buffer of, you know, 300 feet or whatever it was as the radius. You know, that should have been directed to our H O A, so the H O A could have properly notified the entire community as we have been for certain other projects that are closer to the core of McIntosh. But my concern is, is that I don't feel like due diligence was done to adequately notify the residents in this area that could have also been at the meeting tonight to express their concerns as the constituent before me expressed. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Scott, is that everybody?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? This time we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So, got second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, this time we'll entertain a motion on the rezoning request that's before. I, I know the question's been asked twice tonight about the light industrial zoning. Go back long, if I believe that whole area was zoned by a structure before McIntosh was developed. The, and during that time, zoning options have changed dramatically in reference to our addition of our, of our zoning concept. So there's other options that you want to consider. I will tell you that, I think I spoke to Chief Spill, Chief Bearden, who's here. I've been sort of the fire station in reference to vehicles getting out, and I understand that that situation's got better. But with the traffic coming in the area, it's still a concern. I'm not sure if we, voting on this, I, I truly believe there might be a better zoning request that could be somewhat more specific, that the residents would, would have a better understanding of what could go there. This is, this one is pretty broad. Having someone who, I don't live 100 distance to, as Beasley mentioned, but having a shell station around the corner from my house, Church Street, that's, that's a strongly used facility from early morning to closing time at night. It creates substantial traffic, just not in terms of people getting gas, but also in terms of people going in and buying food items. I'm not sure, this is my personal opinion here, I'm not sure that kind of city, that, that particular type of this business is designed to do this location. That's, that's my opinion. I believe that might be an option for other potential zoning that petition might could add for, ask for it, or direct that to Conrad, I'm sure speak to the person if they wish to go that route or not. But the other thing I think that comments I've had called from people of McIntosh is that the residents there have invested an awful lot of money in their homes, and people around that feels like that they need to know now what's been, what may happen and want a voice in that. And you bring up a valid point here. I'm going to ask a legal question, David. Question came a long ago about, in terms of how we, that people know about zones. Would it be statute really possible that in a situation like this, where in McIntosh, it's that whole community, out of our size like this, where indeed that the homeowners group could somehow be notified of potential zoning that impacts that community? Could we not do it just as a matter of course?
I think you can do that. I believe, and I can help the staff here, the land department, I believe going across the rest of the town, entertaining, expanding from 300 feet to there's something beyond that, but I know what you're asking for here is some sort of obligation taken on the city. I don't know that you want to do that, because it would be, you know, anybody could ask that, and if you don't do it, it consists, yeah. All of a sudden, you, you vote up in hand for them, but certainly, I would have to say, the signage that the city went to and they're doing now is excellent. I think you're giving a lot more response to the signs that's out there than it was previously. Furthermore, I think we already, we not required to do, we're not required to send letters out on B and C, we're not, we're not required, we're not required what you do. So you, you recognize that you, you already ordered that, that your staff are doing, up beyond what the state statute requires. And I think it's only 100 yards, 100 feet. Is that correct? It's, it was 300 or 100 feet that's required as far as sending letters out. The state statute, is it 100 feet?
The state statute is specific to a body?
Property, body property, yes, that's right. So you, you're already going beyond that, okay? And as I said, I think they're entertaining going even beyond 300 feet. Were, were we going to look into that and see whether or not we want to have some, think any some sort of this H O A is for traffic?
Well, again, the McIntosh community is, is more than that in terms of the, of the number of residents that's going to be in that, in that 1,900. And, and this is right now, as we speak, the main interest in that whole stuff, and I know this is just talk about second inch of towns.
Yeah, we, we have seen some stress on that area because of the build out, and it's going to continue to get busy. And I've met with the folks out there at various events and things like that. I always appreciate their comments, and they argued with us along the way and then helped us along the way, because we've kind of grown that area out. And we've talked about another ingress, egress at another point, and, and you know, there's a certain point in time that I think that's going to be council's responsibility to address that as we add even more, and, and given the state of the economy, it's probably going to happen sooner rather than later.
So, yeah, I, I just think the U D O, the management of the U D O, you've got a lot of options there that families can choose from. And I think this, this, this is a very unusual situation in the sense that what we're felt on this side right now, this is the primary, about to say 90, 90% of the people, like, like you said, probably intersect that side, that road, and that, that particular parcel property I live at can't be more than 300, 400 feet from that intersection. Something like that.
How many H L Hs? Don't you guys have H L Hs in the communities? So how many?
We have sub-associations.
Okay.
Yes, I would say, I think we're up to about 15 or 16 right now. And.
I, I agree with everything you've said. We've just been through this with the school and the Buck Hill Apartments, and it feels like just, it's been several years now. The, the thing, I just want to say, speaking, talking out loud is that this land use plan says neighborhood commercial. And to me, that's something I've always thought was important, that if you allow some kind of gas station, dry cleaner, beauty parlor, barber, and convenience store, where people have access to it, so they don't even have to go out of their neighborhood. They don't have to get on university. They don't have to go to, you know, World Trade Center. So I, and this is right across the street from what was designated as neighborhood commercial. What are your thoughts on that? Because I think that this is not what we think is the right thing to do, then we need to talk about that.
Well, I think the reality is, this is straight present, so we have the knowledge of what's going. That, that's, that's it.
Well, I, I guess to some degree, we do have knowledge, but they're not bound by.
That's it, each other, let her say. I, I just, it's, I think all the people out there, it's, that's my end, but the work's getting around. And again, is that, that traffic situation there, that particular area? Especially in the mornings, and certain hours.
School, yes, school. Enter. If, we'd be happy to go to pull this request, if, if, if that would, if that would make the council feel better about this, go back to the staff and see if we can work something or do something different. But what we were asking though, is that this property be rezoned to what the councils and the city's plan is. That's all we're asking. We're asking something that's consistent with the future land use plan of the city borough.
No, that, that's, that's regulation that adds. That, that brawl zoning situation doesn't, do you speak to that?
But this was not a conditional reason. And as you know, now how, how you, you spoke this very much, and showing on the fact that it was gonna be a gas station. It may or may not be, that, and that's, that's not a part of the zoning request. That's happened to them, and it's not known. Well, and that's why we, we wanted to be upfront when we sent that letter out. I mean. I certainly appreciate that, because we, we're constrained obviously by what the laws, what we can have, which condition. Right, you know, it's, it's sort of, it's open, you can ask what people, in those conditions, that's how I find it. Anyway, you suggest it may be going back to the board. Out of one, I think it may be good to get back, maybe for the other options. Come back. That would be my thought. I'm just, just trying to make a step here, to have a, a move along, but you know it's ongoing, it's going to be developed. And again, we're, if you, if the plan changes, then we look, we, we were just trying to get a, a plan.
For both the petitioner and for staff, what council's appetite is for rezoning this makes it even more difficult to get to this point. Do we see that as being something that the area needs or not? And I am certainly pro-business and pro-growth personally, but I also am very mindful of the fact that we've stressed the system out there to the point where we're going to have to address, we, we promised these residents, as we put these multifamily homes there, that we would keep an eye on. And we've done some studies, and we've gotten some prices on what to do on the backside. There was some conversation about whether the, the residents out there would do that or another location. But whatever we do at this point on that piece of property is going to have to have, for me to get comfortable, is going to have to have some significant traffic information about the impact, because that's, that's the bottom line, right, right there.
I mean, if the council would like to table, table the request, or we want us to draw the request and go back to staff and we work it and talk to them, we're happy.
Does council have?
Well, what about if we add it back to P and D, and you work with staff at P and D to put it back there and keep? I don't know all the procedural municipal options, but I mean, that, that would be acceptable.
Well, by yourself.
Conrad, you see any problem with that? You know, we've manned it back and that, you know, if they say that can can amend, in other words, try to avoid it, it got a multiple application fee, that's what it's like. If you withdraw it all the way and use a minimum application, I think you back to paying the right fee.
Yeah, right.
I'm trying to get it back to where, you know, your client, you can get it back to go back to the board, have a look at something. You know, with assistance of staff and maybe maybe do an amendment. What do you think, Conrad, as a option?
Yes.
That we had. Absolutely. I think this is a conventional zoning application we have done. So again, just shift that to a specific, a use specific. Really, we would need a different application. Okay, probably the best thing to do is to withdraw, let them do another application if council or client could, you know, apply a fee that was for this one to to the next one, applications.
It it's much cleaner to go ahead and withdraw it. And I think they probably be able to glean some of the feelings of the council as to what they need to come back, if it be a plant development or some sort of other use.
I don't know where you need our approval, but I'd make, you know, based on what I've just been, I'd make a motion that that petitioner app can be allowed to withdraw.
Motion for withdrawal is second, I'll say it. A motion, the second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. You pose. Thank you. Public hearing has been set to amend the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment to section four point five point one one fence or wall subsection B point I, point easements. At this time, we'll repass Conrad again through the.
You be mayor, members of council. This is a request for a unified development ordinance text amendment to section four point five one one subsection B, remnant two for easements. Explains the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan in that it further clarifies concerns that regards to placement of fencing within easements. At their February twenty eighth, the planning's only mentioned unanimously recommended approval of this request that brief council at or March first. And staff is recommending approval consistency, consistency, consistency statement sheet option one and is available pending questions, council may have. Any questions for Conrad?
So somebody can put a fence in a city easement.
We've got Tom Lambert who's near here. Hey, thank you, mayor, council. The brief purpose of this amendment to the ordinance would just kind of simplify our permitting process. So the previous and current, so our U D O addressing fences kind of covers all easements the same. The problem we found with the staff level on permitting fees is all easements are not the same. So there's public easements and then there's private easements. And what the current ordinance does is kind of make the city the enforcer of private easements, which are really no more different than the city trying to be the enforcer of a D restriction or a H O A restricted covenant. But we're not party to that agreement. So what this does is separate between public easements, which could be stuff like our water lines, our sewer lines, our storm drain lines, and in private easements, which could be cross accesses, which they could be power easements. But essentially, we're putting the onus back on the applicant to confirm that they had dealt with, if you'd say, due power expense, that they had talked to do power, they've got due power permission in order to do what they're telling us that they want to do. Because we're not a party of that agreement. We we may not know what the the requirements of that easement are. And so you kind of task staff with trying to chase down stuff that we're really not part of. So what this does is clarify our easements and what we want our areas, which are, the African will be allowed to cross our easements. Get from one side or the other. So if water resource has an outfall line that crosses the property, they can certainly cross the easement with say a fence. What we don't want is then you turn and run down the easement and then put the fence right on top of sewer line for the whole easement. So we kind of clarified and kind of give the applicant a little bit more upfront restrictions about what we want on our opponents. Now, if it's a due power tower line and due power, since we don't care if there's a fence because the line is sixty feet in the air, we're we're taking the city out of that equation and trying to enforce that and double check, make sure that's okay. So that's kind of the clarification points on on what this is trying to do with the text.
And we, you do require offensive permit?
Yes. Yeah. So and and that's where the the holdup was becoming on on fencing permits when we're trying to chase down what what is due power allowed in your easement. And it just was was very taxing to staff on stuff that we really didn't have the option. So in in the fence permit, staff is still reviewing it. So if it shows up and there's an easement on it, staff will comment and see, okay, you're you're crossing the easement. We also have the option to require a gate if you're crossing the city easement. A lot of times that depends on the fence that they're proposing. Certainly if it is a fence that is a a wooden fence or a vinyl fence that has paddles and they're easily removed for a section, that's not quite as intrusive. If somebody had a wrought iron fence that was welded and constantly, then we might look at it with water resources and say, no, we're going to require a gate so that we we're not out there with torches trying to cut your fence down if we need to access our easement. So we look at all of that items during the fence process over there.
The fence permitting just began with the U D O.
The fence permitting went back to.
It's not been that long.
No, and and I'm spitballing here and I'm thinking it was two thousand twelve-ish.
I don't know as I can do it, but.
I just remember.
It has not been, it has not been historically going, going way back.
It's been during my tenure because I remember it was one point ten B or one K.
Yeah, and and we found subsequently that a lot of those fences, water resources, they go out and and they're trying to access and clear a a sewer line easement. Bob's crews trying to get all of those moved about twice a year, Bush Hall and keep those relatively clean for tree growth, just for sewer lines. And in years past, you may go out there and find there's a fence out there now. And then you're trying to track down, how do I get around it? How do I? So so the permitting helps us kind of protect our easements. But yes, to you, to your point, it was not always that way.
I recall that was what drove this permitting with water so they do in terms of fencing on easements.
Is there a fee for that?
Yes. Yes, the fee's a, first that fifty dollars is based on the valuation of the total fence cost. It is much like, it's much like a building where you take the cost of your your construction and then your permit is based on a a percentage of that valuation, the same way that we feel. So it's permanent single that way. Planning is kind of the the clearinghouse for fence permits that was engineered to market the part.
Question, Mayor Todd, this 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 deals with public easements, right?
Yes.
I don't, I don't want to unduly complicate, but we would rather commit to the degree we can based on the easement right we have. Those two of our own underlying fees, it's like we don't want to fence on property, right? I mean, right, it's no, we're, we're, we're to the degree we can, because we'd rather an easement for a street than the people who own the underlying fee come along and say, listen, we didn't give you the start to do that. As long as they know that we don't have the right to do that, which I think.
And the application process, the board is basically, we've gone through that. What they're doing is they are, they are affirming to the cities that they have gone and checked with all the utility holders. Okay. And we're taking their word for it. Okay. If they have done that, we're not getting involved in the enforcement process of a private utility.
Okay, so it's it's an honor.
But it is, and then it is further more, further down the line, if there's some some dispute, a utility needs to come in there and remove the fence. We're not a party to that. They, they, we we base the permit upon their representation. They got permission.
Okay, two, yeah, I I just want to make clear we're doing to the, to the degree we can. And we're not, we don't want to get in the middle of somebody else that whoever runs the underlying fee come off that, you take bracket on it, so.
And and we similar have a similar language, which is, is still proposed, it would now be section C in the ordinance. They kind of clarify that and it's the landlord's responsibility to always be meeting the requirements of of any easement agreements they have, whether whether the fence was put up correctly or incorrectly, they're still responsible. Should it need to be moved in the future.
At their time, they're just saying, they're in the watch, but these are right.
Yes.
That have been granted.
This is public hearing, so anyone publicly, anytime you feel like saying anything.
We have one request online, Mayor.
I'd say one hand raised. Scott, Scott, is there someone that?
Yes, Mr. Daniel Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So for me, I just like one point of clarification, if I can get that, please. And it was the distinction between city utilities, public and private. And for example, when I requested a variance at the time to put a fence within a utility easement, I did obtain the permission from, you know, Duke Power, Piedmont Natural Gas and and so on and so forth. The response I received was that the city of Burlington recognizes themselves as a utility owner and they did not give permission to encroach on that easement. So does this absolve Burlington from private utility easements as well?
For clarification to Mr. Hernandez's question, the easement that he was dealing with, what is considered a public easement, it is dedicated to all public utilities. So it is not a specific private easement. So his language would would still apply in here as far as he could run home the side of the easement, but just not in the middle of the easement and adjacent to the easement. So in his case, he could pick one side or the other. We we've said that he could cross the easement. So in his case, he could either be a little closer to his house or he could actually be further away from his house and on the far edge of the easement. In his particular case, again, we're just not looking to run a fence down the middle of any public utility easement. For protection of that easement purposes, whether it's our water line. But in that case, in the public, public utility easements that are adjacent to right ways, they could certainly have water lines, certainly have our sewer lines, certainly have fiber optic lines. They're owned by the city of Burlington. In some cases, we do have our fiber optic that's running between buildings, so it's definitely aren't neighborhoods. But in any other public utilities, those are are still considered public easements. A private easement would be something that was specific to due power, where due power has some power lines in neighborhoods that power lines run in the back of the properties. So that would be a a private utility.
Thank you. Any other public comments or?
Yes, sir, that's the only one.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to close public. A motion, the second, all in favor, signify by aye. Okay, this time we'll entertain a motion to consider the rezoning.
I make a motion to approve the request to amend the city of Burlington Unified Development Ordinance with the proposed text amendment. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed text amendment with the comprehensive plan in that section four, land use goal one, recommendation five of comprehensive plan calls for an update of the unified development ordinance. Section four, land use goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions are consistent with the vision of the plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that section four, land use goal two, recommendation four of comprehensive plan addresses confusion, conflicts, and opposeness in the code. For a new unified development ordinance, section four, land use goal two, recommendation four of the comprehensive plan, a new U D O will be modern, graphically intensive, and user friendly for both the public petitioner and administrative perspective.
We have a motion is your second.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor, signify by aye. You pose. Okay, thank you. This time we'll move to our public comment period. Nice public comment, it'll be heard in person as well as virtually via Zoom. In-person comments will be heard first, followed by virtual comments. At that time, I'll call public comments for topics that are not on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes on their comment. I do not have a list, is there? Okay, so we'll move from public comment period to council comments. I've got one with, thank you, it is ten forty five and city staff is still kind of smiling. So I want to really tell the staff how much we appreciate. And we've had some couple of complicated things tonight. And I think it's important the city of Burlington understands dedication of staff once started back in May twenty twenty one. And it got to us tonight and we're still working on it. So and that's a testament to staff and and trying to work through things. So we greatly appreciate that. The other, I'd like to welcome our interim city manager, David Cheek, to his first meeting.
Well, it's good to be here.
So then we got that agreement outside. And yeah, I'm on my list. Tony, I do know we have a community event coming up the eighteenth, is that right?
Friday night is, or Friday evening, it's starting for markets, the take back your day, celebration downtown on Front Street at Main.
Thank you so much. That's all I have. Any other comments?
I have a couple of comments. One is that we, once again, the town's news, we had another article about Western electric. Is there any way possible that in the water sewer? Yeah, can we send something out about where we stand on this? You know, this guy was quoted in there, just tear it down. Well, you know, the city of Burlington does its own western electric. So somewhere or another, we have to communicate to the community about what the city of Burlington is doing about this problem. What everyone may write up. So I appreciate that. Number two, Chief Long, this is the third letter that I received in the mail to Mahone in reference to the Chapel Hill Road, Maple Avenue area, that Rite Aid that evidently is vacant. I know we've talked about it before, but they keep calling CDC, CBC about this. Then it's evidently the same person is living over there. You guys move them out, they come back, that sort of thing. Can we put that on someone's radar within the police department in that area to at least do a ride, drive by or something to do something? I don't know exactly what we can do. I don't know meeting and talking about that, but this is the third letter. And it's funny, this gentleman spoke up tonight, who is no longer here, about Bonner Bridge speeding. I had a telephone call today about that same area with speeding. So maybe we need some visibility in that area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments earlier tonight. It was greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Any other?
Just had one person I wanted to recognize tonight with her last meeting, my first, her last, and I did not run her off.
That's not what she said.
But, yeah, walked in the doors, yeah. But Michelle Parker Evans, I think, has been with the city for four months now. Serving us diligence, I just wanted to recognize her, thank her for.
Thank you.
I promise to do the minutes for this meeting.
Those would be hours, not minutes. But, Michelle, I'm glad you brought that up, thank you so much. I had completely overlooked it, I think, tired. But you, you came in as an interim when we slowly needed it and have been very professional, very diligent and, and you're safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Right now, and I lost your state of left.
I'm, I got a license restriction, I gotta hang on. Motion to. A term, all in favor?